I call the March 16, 2021 closed session of the City of Fullerton City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the information involving participation?
Thank you, Mayor. On March 4, 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency in California as a result of the threat of COVID and then issued Executive Order N 2920, which allows the local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and address the local legislative body. Pursuant to the Executive Order, please be advised that some or all of the council may participate in meetings via teleconference. Members of the public can access meetings streamed live online at fullerton.legistar.com, on Spectrum Cable, Channel 3, on AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. The chamber will have limited seating available on a first-come, first-served basis for members of the public to attend the meeting in person, and all persons visiting city facilities shall wear face masks and observe social distancing protocols. The public may make an oral public comment via computer, smart device, or telephone. Attendees' names and/or phone numbers may display in the Zoom meeting during the meeting. For those wishing to speak via telephone, the number is 1-669-900-9128, and enter Zoom meeting ID 977-33473665. The passcode is 246854, then press the pound sign. When prompted, enter a participation ID number and press pound again. If you'd like to make a comment, enter *9 when the mayor calls for comment on the item. Staff will be notified, and you will be in the rotation to make a public comment. If you are in the Zoom meeting and wish to make a comment, utilize the raise hand feature on your computer, and a staff member will call you either by your name or the digits of your phone number when it's your time to talk. Everyone will have three minutes to speak on each item, and please remember to state your name for the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and with that, could you please conduct the roll call?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Councilmember Jung will be joining you shortly.
Thank you. We will now hear a public comment on closed-session items. Those wishing to speak during public comments, well, there's no one in attendance, so I will just forego that.
Do we have any public comments on Zoom? Can you hit participants real quick? We have no comments on Zoom.
Okay, so with that, we will recess to closed session. We will now recess, and to discuss closed-session items, including number 54957.6, it's item number three, "Conference with Labor Negotiator with Agency Representatives to Discuss the Parameters of Authority for Negotiating Salaries, Benefits, and Working Conditions for the Fullerton Municipal Employees Federation." And item number five, "The City Was Served With a Notice of Potential Lawsuit for ADA Impediments Regarding a Public Parking Facility." And with that, we are adjourned for closed session. I call the March 16, 2021 meeting of the Fullerton City Council, the regular meeting agenda, to order on March 16, 2021. The public and council members may participate in this meeting remotely. Limited seating will be available for the public. The public may make public comment in person or via Zoom. In March 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, and then issued Executive Order N 2920, which allows a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body. Pursuant to Executive Order N 2920, please be advised that some or all of the Fullerton City Council will participate in meetings via teleconference at times. Members of the public can access meetings streamed live online at HTTPS:fullerton.legstar.com, on Spectrum Cable, Channel 3, and on AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. The council chamber will have limited seating available on a first-come, first-served basis for members of the public to attend the meeting in person. All persons visiting city facilities shall wear face masks and observe social distancing protocols. The public may make an oral public comment via computer, smart device, or telephone. Attendee names and/or phone numbers will display during the meeting.
And for those wishing to speak via telephone, you can call 1-669-900-9128 and enter Zoom meeting ID number 924-2875-1415, then press the pound sign. When prompted, enter your participation ID, and then press the pound sign again. If participants would like to make a comment, please enter *9 when the mayor calls comment for that item. The city staff will be notified, and you will be in the rotation to make a public comment. For those wishing to speak on this item via Zoom, please utilize the raise hand feature on the computer, smartphone, or tablet to notify city staff to include you in the rotation to make a public comment. A staff member will call out your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and you'll have three minutes to speak on the item. Please remember to state your name for the record. Those wishing to address city council in person must register to speak on each item at the front counter in the city manager's office, and please be sure to register in plenty of time for your name to be called. And for those in attendance, please only sit in designated open seats and wear your masks at all times. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And this evening, we do have someone to conduct our invocation. Could you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Hi, I'm Jason Phillips. I'm a local pastor here and a chaplain for our police department, and also run a collaborative of churches called Fullerton Act. And it's been a long time since I've seen a lot of you. Welcome to our new council members. I haven't met you. Mayor Whitaker, you've been a council member ever since I've been around, so longevity, is that a good or bad thing? I don't know.
Well, you're well-recognized, but the mask does throw us off.
So, welcome. I'm glad to be here, and I'll pray. Lord, I thank you so much for the city and the residents here. I pray for their safety and the flourishing of everyone who lives in Fullerton. I pray for our council members, our mayor, as they're here tonight. Lord, give them the energy, the wisdom, and the discernment to make decisions that help everyone who lives here, especially those who are often unseen and unheard. Lord, may you protect them, Lord, and may you bless really all our city staff, all our council, who work so hard to do so much for our city. I'm so grateful for them all and for all our residents. Your name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and I would ask at this time for all of us who are present to stand to do the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask Councilmember Jesus Silva to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have a closed-session report this evening?
There's no report this evening.
Thank you. And at this time, I would ask fellow council members to provide any ex parte communications.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I spoke to a member of the OCA, Mr. Tim Steed, who represents our Fullerton employees.
Thank you.
I had the same conversation, also with this there, Tim Steed of OCA. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I had email and text conversations with Charles Barfield and Tim Steed as well from OCA.
And we do have no presentations this evening, and we would be ready at this time for public comments in the regular session. You will be able to make comments directed—
One over there, against the wall.
Oh, over there, okay.
You may make comments directed to the council on matters that do not appear on this agenda, and at all times, we expect good decorum in this chamber. And with that, you have up to three minutes. You don't have to use all three minutes, I always remind speakers, but we are interested in hearing your input this evening, so please begin.
Oh, sorry.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to make public comments, please line up along the wall, along by the microphone.
Anyways, is my time getting burned up here? I've got some documentation I just gave to the subdivider here for the chief tonight. Thank you for that. Appreciate you. I'm working on some nuclear codes. I'm hoping, you know, maybe one kid like myself could change the whole scene, you know? I don't want to see anybody get fried, kids, children. Anyways, there's that. I want those documentations presented to the council. I'll come back to La Cinda next week and get them back. I want them all back, please. It's costing me a lot of money. As far as the rest of it goes, 1269 would be satellites to cell sites. That's the main nuclear code, I do think, in my own mind. It's in theory, so I'm not acting like the genius here, but I'm trying to do my best. As well, BNSF, that freight train that rolls out in front of your people's right, that evil train, there's two of them. One's chemical warfare, that's the tankers, and then the boundaries of all the metro areas would be the container train, which is called the hotshot. BNSF 13 is B, N would be 2. It's on the paperwork, you'll see it. You'll understand it if I'm right. As well, we're going to start talking about the Adam's apple to the female manifesting her slave chain. Police officers, this is in your favor. I don't think anybody needs to be strapping on a gun, presenting the gun to the public. If you've been watching Netflix and HBO lately, there's a lot of death going on, and our kids are watching this. So this is where I picked that up on. Adam's apple is the shock collar. You got your white collar, blue collar, correct, Mayor? Correct. Right, the female's running the show, she's not going to be for much longer, and we're going to get that done with cat urine. So I'm going to get the paperwork for that, which is a pH balance. You know, you dip it into the urine, it'll turn the color, and if you are matching an animal urine, you're not human, which would be human trafficking. Right, everybody understand human trafficking? That'd be our jails, all the stuff that we do not need. So other than that, everybody have a good night, huh?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So I'll come back for those?
Good evening.
Good evening. A few months ago, I was in a safe parking program, and me and my girlfriend went through about four surgeries in that time. We're both handicapped, and they kind of like showed favoritism to people that were working, and they kind of, they didn't do anything for us, basically. And kind of like the other people that were there, they got like hood housing, everyone got taken care of, but we got thrown on the streets, back on the streets in our motorhome. Me and my girlfriend, we don't do drugs or anything like that, kind of like, and we're thrown back into, you know what I mean, into the cesspool now. And, you know, it's just, it's crazy. I wanted to know if they're going to do anything kind of like for us or something like that. I mean, basically, because we're kind of like in this little situation, because we're both on Social Security, and kind of like our income is kind of like at the minimum, and kind of like we're kind of like too, we don't want to put everything into our rent and then have nothing for food and everything else, but electricity and, so kind of like we're, you know, I do have a decent motorhome, but I'm in a situation right now, and kind of like, you know, can you understand that? I mean, to where we can possibly go to another city, but all our doctors and stuff are right here, and the travel and everything, you know, I don't know. So kind of like we're in a caught in a little situation right here.
Well, in public comments, we don't really respond for non-agendized items, but at the end of public comments, we will summarize. Perhaps we have some information for you.
Oh, I'd love to hear.
Thank you for your comments.
Actually, also, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if you would—
Hold on, one more thing.
—if you would provide your information to our city clerk, and maybe we can put you in touch with our housing staff, and maybe they'll find some program for you.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. I'm Harry Longenbacher, and I live in Fullerton. And first, I'd like to ask you to pull from the consent calendar, item four, the annual housing element progress report. I want to discuss that in more depth. And secondly, I want to comment on the previous item on the consent calendar, just briefly, the homeless plan committee report update. So I want to thank you for keeping track of this. I was on that committee in 2019, and we made a bunch of recommendations, and I'm glad you're tracking them. And I wanted to make one suggestion, that you take advantage of the people in Fullerton that were on that committee and on work in the Fullerton Collaborative. I noticed one place you have local collaboratives and community and economic development as the lead department for one item, and I think that you can find other items that these advocates can do for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, thank you. My name is Jacqueline Murillo. Some of you already know me. I am, this is my seventh time here. I'm a leader in the Buenos Aires city. But tonight, I am very, very happy to come to express our appreciation of the health of the parents of the elementary Whitaker, the head start of Buenos Aires, and of course, the Buenos Aires High School. The parents are very, very grateful, and they are very, they are very appreciative, all of you guys are doing for, to listen, the desire of our Fullerton neighbors, parents who came out to defend the most vulnerable, which are our children and young people. We know that the fight of these parents is not over yet, and they will continue working to take care of their children and those who are them. We support the cause of our neighbors, because like them, we also are parents, and we want our children free of drugs, too. Thank you so much, very much, and thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Hi, Kirihara Mio, District 4. I just want to say just a few things, some positive, some negative. Kudos to Ahmad for being a bulldog regarding fixing Orange Thorpe. If it wasn't for your tenacity to fight for the South Side, we all know that Orange Thorpe would not have had a priority. I'm sorry that Meg is not here. I wanted to thank the street crew who responded so quickly to fill some potholes in my neighborhood. Something that has been bothering me regarding campaign donations that I noticed was John Saunders, owner of Rancho La Paz Mobile Homes, donated a lot of money to Councilman Dunlap. And we all, we all are, we all are aware of what kind of owner he is. I also know that my years with the city of San Ana, that he is not a reputable landlord. And I also noticed that the entire Bouchala family donated a lot of money to Councilman Jung. You both need to be very careful regarding these donors, regarding what they will want or require from you in the future. Please don't be naive. Remember that you work for the city of Fullerton, not for the developers. And I also want to mention that when the mayor, when you ask us, public commentators, to be cordial to council, you should require the same of your council members. I have observed Dunlap loudly and rudely interrupt Councilman Silva, and also Jung did the same thing to Councilman Zara. I didn't hear you reprimand them at that moment, but I hope behind closed doors, you did, because this is so unprofessional, and to be honest, I haven't seen this type of behavior, disrespectful behavior, on the dais in many, many years. I just hate to see this embarrassment continue. I also want to mention that isn't it ironic that there is an illegal dispensary right across the street from Woodcrest Park? This is where most of the Hispanic women live who were adamantly against legal dispensaries. Over a three-year period, we had numerous community meetings, town halls, and presentations, so it was nothing that was rushed or pushed through, as Dunlap once said at a council meeting. You and Jung obviously had no clue of all that had been done to do the right thing for the city of Fullerton. Thank you.
Thank you, here.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Maureen Milton, 53-year resident of Fullerton. Tonight, I want to bring up some things regarding the Korean memorial. There are seven items that I want to cover, but one will be the most important. I'll run across the seven very quickly. One is regarding a biography building, fundraising, handicap accessibility for the Molely Challenge and the handicap, the storage building, and visitors, and computer comments. This will continue in other councils. Tonight is the most important thing regarding the Korean memorial. We are going to have something that no other memorial or gravesite for the military has occurred. A gentleman, I can't remember his last name, but he was a priest, a chaplain, and his name was Father Joseph, and his last name started with a K. He was honored by the President of the United States, and also, he was honored by the Pope with the first tiniest step of sainthood. This, I think, is very, very important. I was, my mouth dropped open when I heard this on the news. This should be brought into the idea of the memorial, and also, it should be something that everyone should know about, because, as I say, being highly honored by the church like that is something special. I have no affiliation with Korea, except that I lived through it, and I had no relatives, but when I heard about this priest whose remains were found on March 5, 2021, this is quite a find and quite an achievement for military personnel. The other things that I will talk about will be, are there going to, with all the names, the one thing that started is I feel that the names, that the people of Fullerton, the residents of Fullerton, should be highlighted. And I understand there's 29, and as Mr. Pack told me, there's 59 in the County of Orange, and then the tremendous amount from the State of California. But I thank you so very much, and I will continue this at another council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, and council members, my name is Joe Pack. I'm the Secretary General of the Korean War Memorial. I came here because I heard Mrs. Milton was going to speak, and I didn't know what she was going to talk about, so I thought I would follow her and try to answer what she had to say. I really appreciate her support for the Korean War Memorial, and as she mentioned, there are 58 Orange County people who went to Korea and never came back. So I have a list of 58 members from the Orange County that we are going to put a separate column to indicate that these are the people from our own county, Orange County, who went to Korea and fought and gave their all. So I just wanted to answer one of Mrs. Milton's questions, that we're going to do that. It was very difficult to come up with the 29, the Fullertonians who went and never came back. So instead of just having our Fullertonians, I think it'll be more meaningful to put all the 58 people from Orange County in one segment of the five-star figure. As some of you know, 2,611 from California went to fight for the Korea, and they gave their all, and that's most number out of the 50 states and five territories, and we really, really owe everything to those 36,492 US service members who gave their all to liberate and to beat the communists, to make the Korea what it is today. So we continue to work. She mentioned about fundraising. Fundraising is going very, very well. Just two weeks ago, the South Korean government provided 236,000, some change to our committee, so we are up to, we are just short about 40,000, and we're going to get some more over this weekend. So we are really, we really appreciate the city of Fullerton for providing the venue at the Dog Pond, and this is going to be historic, and this is one of, is only one in the United States that has, that's going to have entire 36,492 names inscribed. And this will bring the two countries closer, and I remember 2014 when Mayor Whitaker was the mayor. And I remember 2014 when Mayor Whitaker was the mayor back then. That's the first time we approached the city of Fullerton to bring this idea. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. You had translation or not?
Buenas tardes, Mayor Whitaker. Buenas tardes, señor Silva. Buenas tardes, señora Ma. Buenas tardes, concejales. Estoy aquí en esta tarde para decirles cuál ha sido el trabajo de la policía con los ciudadanos residentes de Fullerton. Ahorita en esta pandemia, lo que más extraño es el café con la policía, la pizza con la policía, y todos los eventos con la policía.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody, council and mayor. I'm here this afternoon because I want to talk about the work that the police has done for the citizens of Fullerton. And I do miss the meetings, especially with the police on coffee date or coffee time and pizza time as well.
Ahorita, los policías, hay algunos que nos conocen por nuestros nombres. Hay algunos que nos saludan y nos conocen. Antes no había esa interacción buena con la policía. Claro que el crimen sigue estando porque no lo podemos desterrar y menos si estamos cortos de policías. Pero el trabajo que ellos han hecho hasta ahorita es excelente. El jefe de policía y los oficiales están haciendo muy buen trabajo. Nos gustaría darnos nuestro apoyo hasta esta tarde y agradecerles a ellos y a ustedes por su trabajo tan bueno que están haciendo.
With some of the police force, they do know us by name now. Before, they do say hi to us, and before it wasn't the case. And I just want to thank all the police for doing an excellent job as far as the chief of police and the rest of the force, and that we do, you can count on us for your support.
Solo quería reiterar eso y agradecer por su trabajo que ustedes están haciendo y el de los policías también. Gracias.
Yeah, and again, I just want to thank the work that you do and officers as well. Thank you.
Good evening. No, no problem.
Hi, mi nombre es Veronica. Soy madre de cinco hijos y soy de aquí residente de Fullerton. Y también vengo a apoyar el trabajo de la policía, que ha sido un trabajo excelente. Yo soy residente del parque de Woodcrest, y he visto un gran cambio en 20 años o más que tengo ahí. Este, antes no había vigilancia como ahora, que he visto que están ahí al pendiente de todo el parque. Y soy una residente de aquí de Fullerton, y es todo. Se tienen mi apoyo.
Hello, my name is Veronica, and I am a mom of five kids. And I've been a longtime resident of Fullerton. Also, my support goes to you guys, to the police, for doing an excellent job. And I've been a resident for 20 years, and I've seen that there's more supervision at the park. I am the president of Woodcrest, and I just wanted to thank you for the great job that everyone's doing at the force.
Hi, buenas tardes. I'm Blanca Garcia. I'm here now to talk a little about the police department of this city of Fullerton. They work together with our community, forming a great team. Our community is very different since we worked together. We are very grateful because we have made a change in our community. Now there is a truth between the police and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here because I want to thank the police department and the chief, and also Ahmad, because during the pandemic, they were there for us. I saw the chief from the fire department. I saw Ahmad, the chief, police chief, carrying boxes to the cars for the needy. And I see a difference now. We have more communication with the police. Like before, when I was driving or walking, I would like get scared. I don't know why, but now we get like more, I trust more saying hi. You know, some of them, they know our names, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that during this pandemic, you show your love for your community. We thank you, and God bless you guys, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Eglie Nunsy, longtime resident of Fullerton. We're coming here as a resident to thank the great job of our police department. There are many that ignore the great job they are doing for our community. And one of them is the hard job they're doing integrating and creating that cohesion with our residents. We see many changes with our police, you know, creating different programs that reach our community. They bring the community to the police department. We have the first Spanish citizen academy. And that is because, you know what, they believe in us in communicating with the Latino community. Very soon, we're going to have the Korean citizen academy. And this is, you know, bringing communities together, and that is providing, you know what we're asking for as a resident. We are so grateful for the initiative. To be our chief, Chief Dunlap is very proactive, and that reflects in all the force. We are very grateful for the service. Captain Carter, thank you so much for your service. I know very soon you're going to leave us, and we're going to welcome Captain, our new Captain, John Raiders. They see us always with us. Anything that we need, we call them, and they go with us. Now we know them by name, and that is something that, we never see that before. We are struggling in our areas. We have a lot of crime. But for create a solution, it has to be a collaboration, a partnership between the residents and the police department and our city. Because that is what creates change. Thank you so much. Councilman Zara, tomorrow we're going to have a town hall. We are achieving police at 5:00 P.M., and we want people to hear and give their input about public safety. Thank you, Councilman Silva, because you always support us and sponsor our events to bring together our community here in District 5, even though you are not our councilman. Councilman John, thank you so much for always being present. It's a pleasure to meeting you, and I know we're going to work very closely. And we expect the same from you. Councilman Dunlap, Mayor Protam, and our mayor that we have long time knowing him and his family. Because here in our city, we are like a big, we are a big family. And the family have to take care of each other. But we have the family our police do, and we have to show them our support, our respect, and our gratitude for the service they do. We are very grateful for this partnership. We have our initiative, our community-building initiative, what is going to create these changes. When we're going to educate our community about crime, create more, that initiative will report. Our community doesn't report because it's fearful. We want to teach them, you see the difference, with the process. And they can learn, and they can make education. A lot of people is fearful for retaliation. How we're going to fix that? And we have so many programs in the police department. The Explorer Program, that not everybody is aware of. They give a structure to our children. How to expand it? Now we have hope, the new program that we're going to have with the police department. How we can motivate? Thank you so much for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucia Maturino, longtime resident of Fullerton since I was five years old. I'm 71 now. I'm just here to tell you that when I was 19 years old, I was attacked by a stranger at the park, and it was the most terrifying, horrible experience of my life. And what I learned was that being a victim of a crime is something that really requires really thought as to how important it is to have law enforcement to protect citizens. And because of it, I was able to go on and give back to this community. I wanted to educate people on being safe, let them know that the police department is there to protect our citizens. And, well, many years I worked at the district attorney's office, working with victims of crime, both in sexual assault and in homicide, actually, for eight years. So, you know, I know the terror that victims go through. And along with that, I am a mother of a law enforcement officer and an aunt of a law enforcement officer. And I just want you to know that every day I pray, I pray that when they go out there, that they don't become a victim of a criminal, that they're not looking at that person as my daughter or my nephew. They're looking at that person as someone who's wearing a uniform, and they could become a victim. Many people don't realize that, you know, they have to make split-second decisions. And I wouldn't want to be in their shoes, to be honest with you. But I just want you to know how much I appreciate the Fullerton Police Department. They give what I believe VIP service. I actually work for the police department. I'm a bilingual community liaison. I think for me, it's important to communicate and educate the public on what the law, the laws, and to develop that relationship, that personal relationship, which I think I've done for the last 14 years. So I just want to thank, yes, Captain Carter, we're going to miss you, and just want you to know how much I appreciate law enforcement and how much I want to help the city to become a healthier, peaceful place for us, for youth especially. So thank you for letting me speak this evening, and I look forward to working with you on helping us get rid of gangs and drugs and, you know, those criminals that attack us when we least expect. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Buenas noches. Queremos que nos informen de cómo va el proceso de los cierres de los dispensarios ilegales, ya que ustedes dijeron que iban a contratar a una persona part-time y que se iban a encargar de cerrar los dispensarios ilegales. Estamos aquí para apoyar y trabajar en conjunto con esta persona. Gracias.
Good evening. I wanted to talk about the illegal dispensaries and the closure. And you guys had mentioned that they were going to hire a part-time person to close these dispensaries, and I just wanted to show my support in working with this person. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Nuevamente estamos acá para recordarnos y para recordarles de que los dispensarios ilegales siguen abiertos, y es una preocupación para nosotros. En esta noche quisiéramos pedirle si nos pueden acceder a una junta con el jefe de la policía para la comunidad de Woodcrest, para que nos explique de cómo es el proceso de cerrar los dispensarios ilegales. Nosotros como residentes estamos la mejor disposición de trabajar y colaborar con este departamento para lograr el objetivo de cerrar los dispensarios ilegales. Gracias.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to talk about the illegal dispensaries. And just wanted to let you guys know that we're willing to work. We want to ask for a meeting with the chief of police and the community of Woodcrest about the closure of these illegal dispensaries. And just, we are the best people to collaborate and work with you guys, and that's all. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Elsa Miranda, resident of Fullerton, and I am here to speak in regards to the illegal dispensaries, and in specific, the one on Orange Thorpe in Highland, South Fullerton. I'd like to ask you one more time to create an ordinance to prohibit the illegal sales of marijuana. I feel very embarrassed when Councilmember Zara speaks about the six cannabis dispensaries that are opening illegally in the city. Sounds like he's promoting the sales and giving the name of the specific dispensary on Orange Thorpe instead of protecting the community from these businesses? Wow. If you truly seek the safety and well-being of the citizens, then do something. You seem to not worry of the quality, you seem to be worried about the quality in trying to put the legal dispensaries of the product, and you care about the safety of the consumers, but you don't look interested in shutting them down. I demand the council members to give direction to create an ordinance that prohibits the retail sales of marijuana in the city of Fullerton. Thank you, and have a great night.
Buenos noches.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Mireya Ortega, y estoy aquí para pedir que se haga una ordenanza en el cual se cierran estos dispensarios ilegales. Vivo cerca de un dispensario ilegal que está cerca de la escuela, y me puedo dar cuenta de los problemas que esto causa. Aparte de que está cerca de la escuela, está cerca de la licorería, y esto es un problema para la comunidad. Por eso estoy aquí para apoyar y trabajar juntos para tener una ciudad limpia de estos dispensarios ilegales. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Mireya, and I wanted to request an ordinance for the closure of the legal dispensaries. I live close to a school, and the school is close to this illegal dispensary. That creates a problem. Also, aside from that, it's close to a liquor, a liquor store, and this creates a big problem. And I just wanted to support in the closure and see how we can work so we can have a cleaner city. Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Buenos noches.
Mi nombre es Pilar Maldonado. Vengo esta noche a pedirles, por favor, su ayuda para que nos ayuden a cerrar los dispensarios ilegales. La marihuana en general es mala para la salud de nuestra comunidad. Así la venden en dispensarios legales o ilegales. Y les pedimos su ayuda para que nos expliquen el proceso de cómo cerrarlos y por qué la parte de la policía encargada no ha hecho su trabajo como debe de hacerlo. Muchas gracias por su apoyo.
Hello, good evening. My name is Pilar, and I'm here this afternoon to ask for the closure of these illegal dispensaries. Marijuana, whether it's sold illegal or legal, is a very bad thing, and it's bad for our community. I asked for help in the process of how to close these illegal dispensaries, and also why is the police who is taking or in charge of this is not doing sufficient? Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Alma Chávez. Solo quería pedirles su ayuda para cerrar estos dispensarios de marihuana. Están enfrente de nuestras viviendas. No queremos, si ustedes necesitan nuestro apoyo como comunidad, estamos dispuestos a colaborar. Somos unas mamás de familia que estamos preocupadas por el futuro de nuestros hijos. Muchas gracias. También les quiero agradecer por lo de los coreanos, lo que pusieron para los coreanos. Se me hace algo muy bonito. Muchas gracias. Buenas tardes.
Good evening. My name is Alma Chávez, and I'm asking for your assistance in how to close the illegal dispensaries of marijuana. They're in front of the homes and houses, and we're willing to support and help and collaborate with the city. I am a mom, and I truly care for my youth, for the youth and their future. And I also wanted to thank to thank the Korean community. It was very nice what they presented. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Buenas tardes. Yo soy Natividad Ávila. Sí, estoy en...
Diga.
Okay. Ah, yo vengo a agradecer a Matt por las cosas buenas que ha hecho en el tiempo que ha estado con nosotros. Al Departamento de Policía hemos ayudado, al Departamento de Bomberos, a la ciudad. Cuando se ha requerido de nuestra presencia, hemos estado apoyando por las cosas buenas que nos ha ayudado a todos nosotros como líderes, a la ciudad de Fullerton, y pues en nuestras campañas es todo sí.
Gracias. Hello, good evening. My name is Natividad Ávila, and I wanted to thank Ahmad for the good things that he's done to our community. I want to also thank the PD and the firemen and the great things that have happened in our community, the leaders, the city of Fullerton. And that's it. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes the in-person speakers.
Do we have any Zoom callers for public comments?
While we are waiting for that, perhaps I can just run through how people can participate at this stage. For those wishing to speak via Zoom, please utilize the raise hand feature on your computer, smartphone, or tablet. City staff will be notified, and you will be in the rotation to make a public comment. For those wishing to speak during public comment via telephone, you can do so by calling 1-669-900-9128 and entering the Zoom meeting ID 92428751415. Then press the pound sign. When prompted to enter a participation ID number, press pound sign again. When you are ready to make a comment, enter star nine to raise your virtual hand. When it is your turn, a staff member will call out your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and you will have three minutes to speak. Please remember to press star six to unmute yourself if you are calling in and to state your name for the record. And did we locate any Zoom callers?
We did. We have one caller. Caller would be...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before we go into the Zoom calls, I've had some residents ask about the ecomments and why they're not being read. There are some folks who may not be able to attend in person or are at work or have some physical disabilities and may not have access even to the ability to get on Zoom, and they would like to express themselves and have their comments read in public. So I was just wondering if there's a way that we can resume reading ecomments. And also for future reference, I think, you know, expanding the ability for the public to speak and express themselves, I think we've learned a lot from this process that we can incorporate this on a long-term basis as well. Thank you.
We'll address that at the proper time. Thank you. Yes.
And we are ready for Zoom comments.
Okay. Caller would be area code 714, last three digits, 894.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and council. This is Diane Vanna, longtime resident of Fullerton. I did want to thank you for last meeting postponing passing the ordinance regarding parking, where a lot of the motorhomes are parked, to give at least some time to help these people. What I wanted to say was, it bothered me some of the discussion coming from the dais about this situation of these people, and particularly Mayor Pro-Tim Dunlap. I know your intentions were good, but your comment that we have opened shelters so these people can just go to a shelter and they'll be taken care of, I think really indicates you perhaps do not understand their situation. And from what I've learned in my career as a special education teacher, what I was taught is, you can learn all the information you want, but having relationships with people changes you and helps you to understand them and actually changes you and how you see them and how you relate to them. So what I wanted to say is, you're a businessman. Just by that fact, you naturally will understand what the businesses along that street feel like and what they want. They're, they're your constituents, and you have talked to them, which is totally understandable. But I would ask you, please, to perhaps go out and talk to the people in the motorhomes, develop some relationships with them to understand what their true needs are, because they, in a sense, are not homeless. They have a home in their motorhome. They just need a place to put it. And so to say, to give up your home to go to a shelter, I don't think is really reasonable, and I don't think your intent was to be unreasonable. So I would just urge you to perhaps, they're your constituents also, perhaps spend a little time and go and talk to them also, like you did the businessmen. And that's what I would like to request. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, no more speakers.
Okay, with that, I can bring the discussion back to, in this case, the city manager, who can respond to anything that we need to respond to immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A couple items that were brought up. So, real quick, we are, you know, reaching out to the folks who are working with the Korean War Memorial to see where we're at on that process. So we'll look forward to bringing back to council in the future a timeline on that and update the council and the public on that matter. As far as a, the part-time code enforcement officer for pursuing the illegal marijuana dispensaries, that will be coming forward to the city council for approval on April 6. So the next meeting, the council will have an opportunity to look at what we're proposing for that position. As far as putting in an illegal order, it is illegal to have a cannabis or marijuana dispensary. So there is no need to put forward a new ordinance that says it's illegal. It is currently illegal, and we have a new ordinance saying that. So there may be some confusion about, we're not a charter city, so we can't put an exorbitant penalty or fee on that. We do subscribe to, we're a general law cities, the state law, as to the amount of fines that we can do on a daily basis, and we do provide that. As far as the, kind of a simple one-page in English and Spanish right now as to how to report dispensaries, that is in its final draft. We're making a few tweaks to it, and we will have that as part of the April 6, but we'll probably put it on the website even prior to that day. So, want to give a couple of quick updates regarding to vaccinations. As of yesterday, the metrics for the county were looking very good. The cases per 100,000 residents were at four. If we get to 3.9 or less, that is the level needed to be in the orange tier. Currently, we are now in the red tier. We were in the purple tier. The goal is yellow and then, I guess, green after that, which is, we're all free of this. But those are, for the testing positivity, we are at 2.2%, which is absolutely great. The equity rate was at 3.5. These are the lowest they've been in many, many months here in Orange County. If we remain stable for three weeks, we'll be in the orange tier by the end of the first week in April. So hopefully, at my next update on the April 6 meeting, I'll be saying that we are actually in the orange tier. So as far as metrics for cases today in Orange County, there are 23 positive cases, zero deaths, and 216 people currently hospitalized, including 62 in the ICU. If you've been tracking that, you know, all those numbers are very, very low, which is a good thing. So vaccination supply issues are becoming less of an issue as more supplies in the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is rolled out. Again, we encourage everybody to go to athena.com or download the Athena application, or actually your health provider, or the CVS.com or RiteAid.com. Just want to give a quick update on an issue that some people got stuck in traffic, and there was a lot of issues over around Euclid and Malvern. So today, approximately about 12:00 PM, the city was made aware that there was a sewer overflow at the intersection of Euclid and Malvern. It's in the current Euclid Street construction project. The contractor was, informed us that a water line failed as they were replacing the sewer line. So it actually, they were not touching the water line, but due to its old deteriorated state, it actually, when you remove the soil from around it, it kind of basically exploded at that point, burst. So it was a four-inch cast iron water main, catastrophic failure at the bottom of the pipe, and it caused water, mud, gravel, and other things to flow through the new sewer pipe that was being installed. This caused a backup in the sewer system, and affluent came out of manholes, and it was an ugly mess. So staff responded quickly, along with the contractor, closing portions of intersection, working to divert the flow, you know, trying to get it back down into the sewer system versus into the storm drain system and to the channels. Unfortunately, some of it did. So we have made all the appropriate reports to bodies, the Office of Emergency Services, Orange County Department of Public Health, OC Flood Control District. We had to report to the California Regional Water Quality Control Board reporting system as required by law based on the amount of affluent. And due to the amount, we are more than likely going to see some future action by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And by that, I mean, they will probably fine us something. So that is how serious they take sanitary sewer overflows, and that is one reason why we react quickly and try to prevent them in the first place. So, but wanted to give that update.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Domer. I did want to ask as well, and I appreciated your explanation on the illegal dispensaries. I didn't know if we could receive just a short and prompt to report from Matt Folks involving some of the actions that we have taken or intend to take regarding that issue.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I may, could we have the young lady translate it in Spanish so the residents that were asking about it can understand it?
That's an excellent suggestion. Yes.
Thank you.
And just as crystallized as you can make it in response to what we heard.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, as the city manager mentioned, the municipal, Fullerton Municipal Code currently prohibits all cannabis-related... Oh, I'm sorry. Where'd you go? Oh, we're doing a, we're doing an off-the-record translation?
Sorry, I thought you wanted me to interpret for them.
No, 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 over the microphone.
We all want to hear.
How silly of me. Where's my coffee?
You need to translate him. Yes.
So the...
Pulling my leg. Go ahead.
The Fullerton Municipal Code currently prohibits all cannabis-related uses and/or activities except what is superseded by state law regarding personal consumption and personal cultivation.
Sí, actualmente, la ciudad tiene una ordenancia que prohíbe todo el uso ilegal de cannabis, salvo que en consumo personal y también crecer en sus, que les dan, permiten crecer.
So we have been, we have been working as, again, as the city manager mentioned, to bring an item before the city council at the meeting on April 6 to hire a part-time, non-regular code enforcement officer who will exclusively be working on closing illegal cannabis businesses.
Y el 6 de abril se va, van a realizar una junta para que puedan presentar a la persona que van a contratar a tiempo parcial, que pueda hacer a todos los dispensarios ilegales. Así que eso se va a llevar a cabo el 6 de abril.
That, that officer, we are allowed to issue citations to illegal cannabis businesses and the property owner on a daily citation amount, and that is an escalating amount, again, as Mr. Domer had referenced. And so we believe that by taking a proactive daily citation to the property owner and business, that we can be a little bit more effective in closing down the anywhere from four to six illegal cannabis businesses that are operating in the city. Oops, I probably said too much.
Así que van a trabajar en este, dar multas a estas dispensarios ilegales, también a los propietarios, a los dueños de estos negocios. Van a aumentar la cantidad diario, y este básicamente van a tratar de, con cuatro a seis dispensarios tratar de cerrarlos.
And I'm happy, I'm certainly happy to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Now, I, I think that's what we needed, at least, to provide that general information. So I appreciate that. And also the suggestion of the translation, that was essential in this case.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Could, would, would having someone go out and cite every day, would that change the, the length of the process in trying to shut this down?
It, it does not change the due process that any illegal business is afforded. What it does do is that it exerts a great deal of financial pressure on, on these illegal businesses that currently we are not able to provide because of competing code enforcement complaints and limited staffing.
And what's the maximum penalties?
So at the, at the maximum penalty, we could be issuing...
You want to let her translate that while you look for the answer?
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if you wanted me to translate this. Everything's to the community. So la pregunta fue este, eso va a cambiar, la ciudad va a cambiar el proceso de tratar de eliminar o cerrar estos dispensarios. Eso depende de las quejas que reciban, y va a haber una sanción, una multa, última, una sanción o multa máxima de una cantidad.
Is, is that $500 a day?
So it's actually $1,800 a day.
Okay.
There's also an opportunity, this council actually took an action in, in May of 2019 to add an additional fine in addition to the 1,800. We can also, in some cases, cite an additional 2,500 on top of the 1,800 as a daily citation if there is an active building safety violation and there is trash and debris available on the outside. So 1,800 is a daily, and then if there is building and safety violations or debris or trash outside of the business, there's an additional $2,500 a day that we can cite.
Y la multa, multa máxima sería 1,800 cada día, diario por día, y también otra multa adicional de 2,500 diario si es que encuentran escombros o basura alrededor o dentro del edificio.
And that is to both the business operator as well as the property owner. So they can, they'll both be cited that full amount.
Y pueden amultar a ambos, el propietario del negocio y el operador del negocio también.
Okay, thank you for that. Sounds like a powerful disincentive, anyway. With, with that, Mr. City Manager, were there any other department reports? Any staff reports?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there was no other department report, but I do know that one of the items on the consent calendar, the Housing Element Progress Report was polled, and I know that's, it's more of a technical, I don't know if there's a lot of questions or if it was mixed up with something else, but it's, it's a, both that and the other report on the Homeless Plan Committee are just updates on the, the staff report. There was nothing else we had further to add to it, so.
Yeah, I, I understand. That was a member of the public, and perhaps we can answer any particular questions on that. We'll try to deal with it that way when we get to it. With that, then, I would like to bring the discussion to council reports as well. I see Councilmember Jung appears at the ready here.
Mr. Mayor, council, we have no women on this day as currently, so I wanted to remind everyone, March is Women's History Month, and while we celebrate this month, we should also acknowledge the suffering of women during this pandemic. In the month of December alone, women accounted for all of the 140,000 job losses in America. And all this had me thinking about my mother, born in what is now North Korea. My mother's family was part of the mass exodus from North Korea to the liberated South during the Korean War. A painful journey that included the death of her older sister and her father being trapped behind in North Korea where he's buried today. My mother's childhood was filled with trial and tribulation. It's a common theme amongst people from war-torn countries forced to flee their homeland. It's a common theme amongst people from war-torn countries forced to flee their homeland or fight to stay and rebuild. Indeed, after I was born, we immigrated to America. She worked as a fry cook, saving every penny to purchase a liquor store in South Central LA. She dedicated her life to pursuing the American dream of owning her own home. She got up before dawn to work 365 days a year for much of my childhood, achieved that goal. I'll never forget the pain on my mother's face when the bank foreclosed on her home. She received her first vaccination shot last week because of the outreach of a Korean nonprofit called KCS. I wanted to thank Irvine Vice Mayor Tammy Kim, all the wonderful people at KCS for giving her this life-saving gift. My mother is on my mind this evening because I am and always will be my father's son, but I appreciate that I'm only here because of the strength of my mother. So I am proud to honor her sacrifice and the sacrifice of all women this March as we celebrate Women's History Month. We have a long way to go to get to true equality, but as a father of two daughters, I can assure you, I'm encouraged for this future, and I'm grateful for all the grace of women that we have today. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jung. Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a touching honor to your mother, Councilmember Jung, so certainly a tough act to follow. But, you know, I wanted to bring up something that is near and dear to all of our hearts as Fullerton residents, and so of course, you live here, you know, I could only be talking about the roads, and specifically the road conditions. And I'm concerned tonight because, you know, at our 12th, at our meeting back in December, actually my first meeting as a council member, you know, we asked for a study session on road repairs. And, you know, we're here three months later, and we have yet to see that study session. We saw it last week, we saw a robust presentation on some of the housing challenges facing our community, and, you know, in my opinion, there's no reason we couldn't see a similarly elaborate presentation on solutions to fixing our roads and streets. You know, since about that same council meeting, this council has been able to save the taxpayer, you know, close to a half a million dollars, you know, through various expenses. Now, you might, you might say that that's a drop in the bucket in relation to the city's budget, and also in relation to the, you know, needed road repairs, and indeed it is. But however, you invest that money in somebody's neighborhood, in somebody's streets, and it will have an immediate impact in improving their quality of life. You know, we're talking about streets that are so bad, you could go on any social media outlet, Facebook, Nextdoor, you know, and actually, I have to note that one of my neighbors has recently established an Instagram page where they actually highlight, you know, just how bad the road conditions are throughout our city. And it started because, you know, they happened to sprain their ankle while out on a run and thought that it might be funny to kind of take pictures to highlight some of these conditions. And while I've been able to get them to also report those street conditions to the My Fullerton app, you know, these are very small steps that the community is taking. And, you know, you look at any of these social media outlets and the correspondence that I get, whether I'm at the grocery store, whether I'm, you know, at a Little League field, or whether I'm, you know, having, you know, a meal with my family at a restaurant, and everybody wants to know about the road conditions and what we're going to do to fix them. And so for those who suggest that a tax increase would solve things, I've got a bridge to sell you. The reality is, we are decades behind the curve here, and we have decades of deficiencies that we're trying to fix with a Band-Aid. So I think what we really need to do is bring our fellow Fullerton residents together, bring our businesses together, and we need to put together a study session so that everyone can understand the conditions that are here, you know, facing the community today, not a sales pitch for a tax increase, but just a plan and outline of actions that we can take to fix our streets. You know, a little later on tonight, we're going to be talking about about $35 million in funding that the city is getting from the federal government. And I would argue that all of that money should be invested right back into our infrastructure so that we can fix, you know, make the repairs that we need to our road, streets, and infrastructure. So I'd ask that we could get that study session agendized. I'd like to see it agendized in the next 30 to 45 days. I'm sure I could, would have some support from fellow council members to do that, and, you know, I look forward to talking about some of the funding that we will be receiving and so that we can make, you know, make these repairs at once. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, if you want, generally what we try to do is a study session on the Tuesday in between the first and third meeting, so we could put that on the April 13th. That would be a Tuesday night.
I certainly would support that.
Sure. We'll make that happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Silva, you're prepared?
Yes, oh, thank you, Mayor, and I too, I was going to celebrate and acknowledge Women's History Month, so thank you, Mr. Jung, for such a great tribute to your mom, and, and it was also important to me because, like I said, I've got the two daughters, I've got nieces and sisters and moms and grandmothers, so to all you women, congratulations and thank you for all you've done. And, and just to remind you again, I will be sending out an email for my, not walk and talks anymore, but parks, people, and conversation. I'll be bringing those up again in April, so we'll, we'll meet at a local park, walk around, and we can discuss issues and concerns that the community may have. And that's all I've got tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Councilmember Zara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge all the strong ladies in our community in, during this Women's Heritage Month, and for whether we agree or disagree on the issues, you have been a tremendous force in bringing a voice to South Fulton, so this month I dedicate to you. I do want to point out a personal, very personal matter to me, which is, this month marks 10 years of the civil war in Syria. It's my country of birth and where my parents, my family are. And it is a 10 years where a country has been decimated, half, over half a million dead, 10 million people displaced of a population that was 22 million, whether internally or externally. Many refugees around the world spread throughout, during this last decade, including many here that came to Orange County. And I just want to make sure that we are, we are reminded and, of the blessings that we have here in our country, in America, and that there are people in the world that are struggling even today. The war has not ended, it still continues, and there's still fighting, and there's still death, there's still destruction. So we, we count our blessings and, you know, kudos to all those refugees and those folks and organizations that helped them all come over here to the United States and enjoy our freedoms here. I do want to say that, you know, public safety has always been one of my main concerns, especially in South Fulton, and we always, you know, community conversations are very, very important. So this month, instead of my usual monthly meeting, we're, I'm partnering again with the Fulton Collaborative to do a town hall with our chief Dunn to talk about public safety. It's a follow-up to last year's meeting, town hall, to see what, what has, what's new in public safety in Fullerton, and for the public to be able to ask questions. And this will be a live stream event, so folks can watch it on Facebook, but it'll also, for those who don't have Facebook, unfortunately, technology is a little tricky. For those who don't have Facebook streaming and live streaming, they can, we're going to upload it afterwards to YouTube, so you can watch it on YouTube as well. The information will be on my Facebook page, Ahmadzara/face, Facebook.com/AmadzaraCounsel. It's also on the Fulton Collaborative page on Facebook, and we'll try to get it out as well to, through email and other, other ways. This meeting will be next Wednesday, the 24th, at 5:00 PM. Again, it will be a virtual meeting, so if you have any more information, need any more information on this, please let me know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Zara. I have just a few items to cover this evening, and some are happy and some aren't so happy, but there are individuals in this city who require this type of a spotlight to be shined on occasion. One item is this one, which we will close this evening's meeting with a short moment of silence in memory of Daniel Harland Bussel. And I have a certificate of official city council actions as to certify that the Fullerton City Council adjourned its Tuesday, March 16th council meeting in memory of Daniel Harland Bussel, who passed away February 5th, 2021, at the young age of six years. The council's action was taken in recognition of Daniel's short life and a three-year courageous battle with neuroblastoma. Daniel is survived by his parents and his best friend, his eight-year-old brother. His family and friends will always remember his sassy sense of humor and stubborn perseverance. Presented this date in remembrance of a short life spent in building a legacy to help other parents and families through fighting neuroblastoma. And for those not so familiar with neuroblastoma, it is a fairly rare cancer condition. It, it affects fewer than 20,000 cases in the United States per year, but it often affects young children. And the intent in, in calling attention to this by the Bussel family is, they've stated that they'd like to guard other parents and families from ever experiencing this nightmare. We're trying to build his legacy via raising money for the organization of doctors that specifically create trials to fight advanced neuroblastoma. They're the ones who kept Daniel alive and thriving for those three years, as normal chemotherapy quickly proved inadequate. His fundraising page is Online Fundraising Center, Daniel Bussel Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. These monies will be dedicated to that research to help end this relatively rare but certainly heartbreaking condition. And the, the other one, which is a little more positive that I have to report on this evening, is, although on a somber topic as well, Ladera Vista Junior High School of the Arts student finalists and awardees in the 22nd Annual Holocaust Art and Writing Contest. So here in Fullerton, we're pleased to share that three students from Ladera Vista Junior High School of the Arts have been selected as finalists for the 22nd Annual Holocaust Art and Writing Contest offered through the Rogers Center for Holocaust Education at Chapman University, sponsored by the 1939 Club, and supported by the Sam Welly Foundation and Dana and Yossi Hollander. There were three students that were singled out under the guidance of Madame Blake at Ladera Vista Junior High School of the Arts. Lydia W. and Violet C. have been selected as finalists in the pros category, and Rhiannon J. has been selected as a film finalist for the contest of sharing strength sustaining humanity. These talented students have been selected from over 5,000 entries submitted from 12 countries, including Poland, Canada, Denmark, Germany, India, Mexico, the People's Republic of China, Romania, South Africa, South Korea, Turkey, and eight states in the United States of America. We do commend the accomplishments of these students, and I just wish to call a little attention to that. Kudos to that group. It is time also to, to move on, but I wanted to point out a very short water report this evening. Even though we've been fairly damp of late, we're still falling less than halfway at this point to our annual rainfall for this area, for the watershed. So we're a little bit under six inches at this point, and the annual average would be somewhat over 13 inches for us. And we are nearly finished with the, the winter season, so although we might add a little bit more to that, it looks to be a rainfall's short year. And the last thing that I have is to wish people an early Happy St. Patrick's Day. So that celebration at least can begin a little bit more tomorrow as things are opening up, as we're seeing a little bit more normalcy from the pandemic at this point. And so with that, that would conclude our council comments. What I'd like to do is what the city manager spoke of, is we did have a member of the public pull, it was item number four, and if that member of the public is still here, I'd, yes, please, if you would come forward to the podium, I, I'd like to deal with, with this item and see if we can answer any particulars or questions that you had regarding it.
Well, mostly I wanted to make a couple of comments, similar to what you may remember me saying last week, and that is that the, there's a table of the number of units that have been built in this housing cycle, showing that now this year we have 154% of the above moderate housing and built as required by the Reno numbers, and 55% of the moderate, low, and very low. And I think it should be pointed out that this is, is quite a shortfall, and it will only get worse when the new housing needs assessment for the next cycle come in. And this, also that the, last year, the council approved allowing up to 350 whole-house short-term rentals in the city of Fullerton, which effectively erodes the housing stock almost as, on the same level of magnitude as all of the 570 units of low, very low, and moderate housing that have been built in all but one year of the cycle, seven out of nine years of, eight out of nine years of the cycle. And the city has an obligation to maintain their housing stock, and this erodes the housing stock. And secondly, I want to comment on a new law that doesn't take effect for this cycle, but will take effect in the next cycle, for which you're developing a plan due in October, and that is AB 139, the Emergency and Transitional Housing Act. It's a 54-page act, it's very dense, and I couldn't understand all of it, but the gist of it is that the housing plan has to specific, more specifically address the needs of people experiencing homelessness, things such as, it requires you to consider things such as the number of beds that go used on average in, in emergency shelters on a monthly basis, the percentage of those in emergency shelters that move to permanent housing, which shows how effective our emergency shelter system is, and our housing element in providing housing for them. My time's up? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, well, thank you for your comments, and I will be asking for other comments as well. I just wanted to check, I've gotten this a bit out of order at this stage, and what I'd like to do is, is perhaps take this item first, get other public comment on it, and then we'll, we'll proceed to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Is there an objection to that?
Yeah, and that's your prerogative, Mr. Mayor, is you could actually do that, and then it can be included as a consent calendar and one action do all, so.
Okay, then what I'd like to do is solicit other public comment on this item which was pulled, and if there are any members of the public that wish to speak to this item, please make that known as soon as possible.
And do we have any Zoom comments on item four?
We do. Okay, Rossio?
Yes, I'm here.
We can hear you. Go ahead and speak.
Yes, this is Rossio Lopez, and I'm a, I would like to mention that I'm requesting an ordinance to remove the illegal dispensaries, the cannabis dispensaries, and I will also and I.
Ma'am, pardon me, but we're on a different item right now. We're on a consent calendar item, which involves the 2020 Annual Housing Element Progress Report. So the time for general comment was passed. We don't, we don't have that now.
Oh, no, I'm so sorry about that.
No, we appreciate your interest in speaking to the council, but this is a specific item.
A different item. Okay, I'm sorry about that. I missed my time. Thank you anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, Jane Reifer.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Hello?
Yes, hi.
Yes, oh, great. Yes, I just want, I don't know what types of activities are allowed to be listed in the progress report. I glanced at it earlier today, and I didn't notice that these two items had been in there, and that is that the city did amazing work, I thought, this year on, this last year on doing a rental eviction moratorium process that actually not only covered residential, but covered commercial, including storage units. I don't know if the storage unit committee, community has abided by it, but the intention helps people who are storing their personal items in, who put their personal items in storage because they aren't staying in their original home. So I just wanted to commend the city of Fullerton for that and see if you can take credit in this progress report, and also for the grants that were made available to people, the $1,000 grants, and I believe there was one other program that somewhat came through the city, through the nonprofits, also helping people with their rental issues during the pandemic. That's my comment and my thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, no more speakers.
Okay, I'll bring the item back to the council, and the council did not elect to pull this item, but maybe this has spurred some question in your minds.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, yeah, when I was notified I was going to be in pull, I tried quickly to look up AB 139 and just at least I didn't have enough time to do it, but I would like to maybe continue it for two weeks to see if we can just actually determine that we are in compliance with 139. I know one of the language says that this bill would require that these factors include housing needs of individuals and families experiencing homelessness, except as specified. By increasing the duties of local officials, this would impose a state mandated local program. So not knowing what that means, if we could just maybe give us a week or so to.
I'm shaking my head. I apologize for that, but it is due by April 1st to the state. It is a report mandated by the state, so we follow everything. And I do apologize, and I'm sure Matt does too, for the little teeny tiny print that is the form, but that is the form that we actually have to fill out. And then staff, I think, did a good job of translating that into the staff report to try to make it a little bit more user-friendly. But it is a very ugly report that I believe the state then extracts information and does some other stuff. If we could better respond to AB 139, Matt, do you have information on that?
Like yourself, I will need to do a little bit more research. My understanding is it's applicable in the next housing cycle. So this, this housing element report is reporting on our efforts during the fifth cycle, which is the one we're in, which expires at the end of this year. And so the additional reporting requirements that are going to come into place, we have a housing consultant that we're working with that's going to make sure that we're crossing every T and dotting every I. So I, without knowing all the details, I can also assure you that if we need to be in compliance, we will be.
Yeah, and this is, and again, to reiterate, this is an after-the-fact report for last year, based on our activity in the fifth cycle that we're currently in and ending.
Well, thank you then.
So to meet that deadline, we could proceed this evening without really any ill effect. Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to double-check and make sure that we have on the agenda a report for Union Pacific Park for the next meeting, correct?
Yes, that'll be on.
Where we can speak a little bit off-topic about the rail district in particular, if I may. I look forward to that report. Thank you very much.
And with that, we have discussed the one item that was pulled from the consent item, and so now in entirety, I would, I would ask for a motion.
I'll move. I second.
And with that, Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Portem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
And while I have the microphone, if you indulge me, I'll read the name of the, read the title of the ordinance that's on the consent calendar, and it is with number eight. It is ordinance number 3297, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fullerton, California, amending Chapter 2.11 of the Municipal Code, setting forth conditions governing commission and committee appointments and office.
All right, thank you for that, and and we are at item number 13, which is a public hearing item. And this would be, the subject is General Plan Revision to Add Four Local Landmarks to the Fullerton Plan Historic Preservation Element and Map of Historical Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Folks, yes.
Members of the city council, there is an item before you to make some revisions to the historic element of our general plan, to add two local properties and two features of cultural significance to our historic register. The amendment action is to amend two exhibits within our general plan, which is called the Fullerton Plan. That's Table 6, which is the list of local register of resources, and then Exhibit 3, which is the map version identifying the location for those historic resources. This is basically how the table looks within the general plan, and so the two properties being added are at 1203 Luann Avenue and 865 North Richmond, and so those are, those are homes being added to the historic register. And then we also, tonight, interestingly enough, have two additional features, which we don't get to add too often, but those two are the YMCA neon sign at 2000 Youth Way, which you can see from Harbor Boulevard, and the Pastoral California mural, which is at the Fullerton High School at 201 East Chapman Avenue. Some maps showing the locations in the city, which is an exhibit that we have showing where all of our historic resources are located, and then pointing out both the Pastoral California mural and the YMCA sign. I would mention that in a separate effort, not an action before you this evening, but will be coming back at a later date, we are looking to amend our process for adding items to the historic register to make it a little bit more streamlined, a little bit more efficient. It is a little bit unusual for cities to have to amend elements of their general plan in order to add items to the historic register. And as we did some surveying with other cities in Orange County and some consulting work with Preserve OC and others, it would be more appropriate for the Landmarks Commission, which is the planning commission in our case, to be that final deciding body for adding items to the historic register, instead of just being a recommendation to the city council. So in a future action, you will be seeing an amendment to both our municipal code and our general plan to rectify that so that future items coming onto the historic register can be done, a little more streamlined process. But with that, we're recommending adopt a resolution, adding the four resources to the local historic register and amending Table 6 and Exhibits 3 and 4. And then this item is categorically exempt from CEQA through a historic resource preservation exemption. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that efficient report, and streamlining our agenda might be a good idea in this regard. I know when I was on planning commission and we functioned for landmarks, that that was handled without coming before the council. With that, if there's any comment from the council at this point?
You know, I did just have just one question, and I guess, perhaps Fullerton Heritage or maybe the applicants can clarify. Just wanted to make sure all owners were consenting and supportive of this action. Action? Awesome.
Okay, then I will open the public hearing for public comments on this item.
And if we have anyone else in the chambers that would like to address city council, please line up at the microphone.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Ernie Kelsey, and I'm president of Fullerton Heritage, and I just wanted to come out this evening and on behalf of our members and our board, we do support adopting the resolution to add those four properties and icons to our list. So we support that, and I came out tonight to tell you that we think you should approve it. So thank you very much for your support of preservation of the city.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate that.
Yes, my, Bob Linnell with Fullerton Heritage, and I just want to make sure that you know that Fullerton Heritage is very much in support of staff's suggestion to revise the general plan document, to delist the local landmark properties so that it streamlines the approval process. I suggest that you instruct staff to come back as soon as possible with that revision so that this eliminates all, any delays for these applications. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. I see no more commenters here in the council chambers. Do we have anyone?
Do we have any Zoom comments?
We do. Jensen Holstrom?
Good evening, city council and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. I would like to thank Fullerton Heritage and city staff for all of their research and efforts in creating the applications for these historic properties and features, and I am supportive of their listing by city council. I would like to mention on a, on a separate note, that I would like there to be some coordinated effort to, in addition to what might have already been done, to further document these landmarks visually through photography and film, so as to increase awareness by the public to their existence and preservation. For example, I have a 360-degree virtual reality camera that creates full panoramic images that can be viewed online as very immersive photographs, and I have created such photos of the Pastoral California mural on the side of the auditorium. And when I posted these images online, I had seen comments from people who had gone to Fullerton High School and had since moved out of state, and their sentiment was, was that seeing my images online, you know, really was immersive and helped them to realize that, that emotional attachment to these historic features. And so I would, would enjoy to donate such images that I have created to the city and other organizations, such as Fullerton Heritage, but I would, I would like to see if there's any interest by council to, you know, just, just put out a notice for local photographers to, to document such features that, you know, are publicly accessible. And, and I think that would be really great so that more people could, could find out about the importance and the significance of these, these, you know, historic nominations by which they might have not heard of otherwise. And that is all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other speakers at this?
There are no more speakers. Oh, I apologize. Never mind, I'm sorry. Someone raised their hand and then lowered. No more speakers.
Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing, bring the matter back to city council.
I'll move the item.
I'll second the item, but I also want to thank Fullerton Heritage for all the work that you've done on this and other, other projects. And I'd want to say my favorite one in here is the YMCA sign. I always loved that sign driving, driving up Harbor, and so it's awesome. Thanks.
Okay, moved and seconded.
I would just ask you just one question, because I think, you know, Mr. Holstrom, you know, asked a good question, and that was, you know, this is probably one of the best reading assignments that we've had in our council packets, you know, in a long time, just because the, the notes, and especially, I believe, it was for the, what's the, the home on Luann, which was a great place, really just around the corner from, you know, from my house as well. But what I really enjoyed seeing was that, at the time that that entire subdivision was put together, the, I think it was called the Skyline Park Neighborhood, they said that the syndicate, I guess the spaces or lots were selling for about $1,600 to $3,500 at the time, and that was back in 1927. So it's always, I think, interesting to help put, you know, especially in today's era of high housing costs, you know, to look back and see at one point what you could have bought one of those lots for.
And seeing no further comment, Madam Clerk, we'll call the question on this for a roll call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Portem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Wow, I think it's a recent record for a public hearing item. And with that, we'll go to our general business part of the agenda. Item number 14 is a water rate progress report for 2020, and this is a receive-and-file item. Will be presented by Meg McQuaid. Good evening.
Thank you. Meg McQuaid, Public Works Director, and I'm glad to be in front of you to kind of celebrate some of the successes of the past year related to the water rates, as well as the implementation of the water rates. So before I get started, I'll talk a little bit about Fullerton's water system and the importance of water, right? I think it's one of the most undervalued commodities that exists. It's so important for life as well as business. You can't have a city if you don't have a safe, reliable water source. And so we currently serve, as you know, a population of over 140,000, and we have roughly 30,000 connections. Our daytime capacity swells with our wonderful educational institutions, and in order to provide the appropriate water for drinking water for all of those needs, we have 67.5 million gallons of storage capacity in our reservoirs. We have 12 booster stations. We have nine active wells with the oldest drilled in the early 1920s. We have seven active import water connections. While we have, the vast majority of the wells are utilized, we try to maximize the groundwater resources that we have, because it's the most reliable, typically least expensive water supply. And I know most of you know this, so if you want me to move on, I can move on.
It's fine to edify the public on some of these numbers, certainly.
Perfect. So 27 million gallons per day, maximum capacity, and we have over 420 miles of pipeline, over half of which exceeded its useful life. And it's kind of interesting, I was reflecting on Mr. Folks' study session that you all attended last week on the housing stock, and there was a slide about the development of the housing stock and how there was over a couple decade periods quadrupling of housing stock. The water system also was installed at roughly the same time in order to support that housing stock and that growth. And we have a situation where the water system was aging, and basically we had water main failures, and we continue to have those until the pipelines are replaced. But because of the needs of the water system, we also had a significant change in just water use. We had a drought that occurred, as you recall, in 2013, 2014. We had major changes to how the state approached water use, and so suddenly the landscape use was no longer there. We had change out of lawns, and so our demand had change out of lawns. And so our demand significantly reduced. The former rate structure was built mainly on the commodity, so the water usage. So it didn't cover the fixed cost of the organization. So when the council was recognizing all these issues, that the water rates were not supporting the needs for the system replacement, they established a water rate ad hoc committee. And that citizens group met for over a year, looking at not only the water system, the capital needs of it, but also the operations. And through that process, they established a recommendation that came forward to council. And we had a five-year series of water rates that were approved on June 4, 2019. So the water rate progress report, this is the reserves, basically as part of that recommendation, council wanted, as well as the water rate committee requested, a report back to our ratepayers of exactly what we had done with that money. We presented various iterations of this to the INRAC committee, some more detailed, and they basically said, we want a user-friendly report that tells the story of the rates coming in, the money coming in, but also how you spent it. So this water rate report included in your packet, if approved, will be posted on our website and translated into both Korean and Spanish so that we can reach all of our ratepayers. But the water rate report presented for you this evening covers the time period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. So this first chart and basically graph, it shows what the water rate study projected as well as the actuals. So you can see the blue line is the projected and the orange is the actual that came in. The target reserve levels were met. The capital spending was a little bit under, although we're on track for mileage. There were non-capital expenses. And because there wasn't as much demand last year, in part because of COVID, but also because we had a slightly wetter year, we didn't have as much, as many water purchases. And so our operational expenses were reduced. And our non-rate revenue was on target. So our rate revenue was a little bit under target. And that again was related to demand reductions in part from COVID and in part from the actual water wet year. So if the bottom line, if I'm going to kind of highlight this more for the people viewing at home, but where we're talking about the beginning balance, the water fund started out at $18.3 million. When you net the expenses against the capital spending, we essentially had a deficit of $600,000. You deduct that and the carryover, add back the carryover CIP appropriation or reduce that, then you come up with an ending balance, a $12.9 million. That's above our cash reserve balance target, which is a good thing. It speaks to fiscal sustainability. And then that money is again then redirected into next year's capital projects. So that's a long way of saying we were essentially on track when you look at operational expenditures, given COVID situation and the reduction in demand. As part, also as part of the rate study, the committee spent a long time looking at, should we bond for this, these capital improvements that are so necessary in our system? Or can we count grant revenue that's going to come into the city? And essentially, the determination was made that bonding wouldn't work because you're essentially paying more for an ongoing need for investment. So you'd just be paying an interest rate. And then secondarily, the grant revenue is not something you can truly count on to make sure that your base remains. It's sometimes one-time revenue. But we still were directed, and as we normally do, we seek out alternative funding supplies. So last year, while the formal approval took place in this fiscal year, last year, we were proceeding with obtaining a $1.87 million grant to help offset the cost of approximately a $5 million well replacement. We also, something not considered in the rate study at all, in fact, the rates were approved in June 4. And we started having information from the Division of Drinking Water that there was a new constituent in town called PFAS. And this contamination, which has nothing to do with the city of Fullerton, it actually is from a manufacturer, a chemical that was developed back in the 1940s. But it is in our environment and it is in our water and we have to clean it up. The Orange County Water District, the board supported them providing the capital expenditures as well as a portion of the ongoing operational expenses. And our council also supported the concept of us joining a partnership with them. So that is essentially millions and millions of dollars that the Fullerton ratepayers don't have to upfront in order to get that necessary treatment on our wells. One of the key features that the water rate committee was concerned about, and I'm sure residents that you hear from, not only the roads, but also water main breaks and those occurring, the need for replacement was really at the top of the list. And establishing these very clear goals was important to the committee. And so you'll see in this chart, it shows the, basically the far end goal over the five-year period, which is 27 miles of pipeline. They establish interim goals, three miles in 20, three miles in 21, escalating to five, then seven, then nine. And that was all done under the cost of service study and that planned capital investment. And I am pleased to report that we are on track to be building, we have 2.24 miles replaced and in construction with 1.8.2 miles. And that was as of June 30 of last year. So this is just a highlight of the project. So Valencia Brookhurst, South Basque, .59 miles, El Rancho Vista Infrastructure, 1.65 miles, 2.24 miles was replaced. Then we have Loma Alta area infrastructure, Jacaranda Drake area infrastructure, Chapman Basque. And basically, that equates to 1.82 miles in construction. I'm hesitating just a little bit because I updated the presentation and it has a really cool map with future projects and information on that. But we will post it in the packet and have that available in the future. Basically, these are other projects that were also completed with ratepayer money in 2020. We had the Basque storm drain improvement and a portion of that was moving a water line in order to effectuate that change. We had the Laguna booster pump stations. A lot of our booster pumps are 50, 60 years old, and they're now having electrical issues and failures. And they also pose somewhat of a safety hazard for our employees. So we're in the process of identifying those for replacement. We replaced the Laguna booster pump. We rehabbed Lower Acacia Reservoir. And we established a new connection with MWD over on the eastern side of the city. And this was to make sure, no matter what happened with our wells, we had the ability to serve that side of the city. And then we also did the construction debris recycling, which is essentially, we have a lot of water main breaks. The asphalt and the spoils that are from those breaks are stored at one of our yards. And we go through a recycling process. It's good for the environment and it saves us money. So this is just a highlight of some of those so that if somebody's reading at home, they know what the reservoirs are and what we replaced. These are also other projects underway. I mentioned the PFAS management. We're already in process and in construction with the Kim 1A Treatment Plant. And right now, we're looking at, we own a major plant in the city of Anaheim. We purchased that back in the early 1900s. And we are basically developing treatment along with OCWD for those wells right now. And then we're also working on the Well 7. We already destroyed the well or in process of destroying and are now drilling that well. Our water system SCADA upgrade, we have the brains of the water system, which is essentially our ability to remote control wells and reservoir levels, providing for fire service, but also providing for the demands during the day. And it provides alarms. We have a need to upgrade it. It was last upgraded in 2009. And as you know, there's been an increased cyber attacks occurring on smaller water agencies and larger water agencies. And we need to bring that up to date. And so that's also one of the things that's currently underway. Another pump station upgrade. I don't know, Matt, if you can get to the other slide presentation under the, excuse me, just a moment. So part of what I wanted to also share with the City Council is kind of the future planning to let you know that we are on track to, thank you, Matt. Yes, please. Thank you. Yes, it's towards the end. Yes, thank you. Okay. You know, I love maps. So it's easier to see in the packet. But basically, this shows the five-year planning tool that we're using to make sure that we're on track for the 3, 3, 5, 7, and 9. And so what we do is you can see, the green dots are over the decades of water mains that are, water main breaks that have occurred where we have not replaced the water main lines. When we replace the main line, we remove that water leak from the map so it doesn't clog up the map. And our analysis, the red dots are those that have occurred in the last five years. Most agencies in our area experience eight to 10 breaks a year. We experience anywhere from 80 to 100, sometimes as high as 120. So there is a serious need to continue this investment and continuing moving forward on the progress of this rate progress project. So with that, I wanted to make-
Ms. McQuaid, if I may?
Yes.
If you go back to the map, Matt, please.
Oh, sorry, Matt.
The map, oh, anyway, so it's great to see. But do we have numbers of like, what areas have, in raw numbers, how many breaks we've had? Like, where, I know you said there were these red dots, there's a lot of breaks. So each dot's one break, right?
Yes. And in the last, the red dots mean in the last five years. So we've had, like, West Ash, I recall them having something like nine or 10 breaks over a three-year period. So that's how we oftentimes prioritize. And that's why I have a big planning purposes only, you know, project subject to change. Because last week or the week before, I think we had four or five main breaks. So that can significantly impact where we direct the resources based on the actual breaks that are occurring.
You know, I just, I, well, maybe if you can put it online, the actual number, so we can, instead of counting dots, we can see a number if you have that.
So do you want a number per neighborhood or a number-
Yeah, per neighborhood, just so we can kind of, I mean, visually, you can see, we have a lot of breaks, no doubt. But if we can just add a number to it, that'd be great, you know?
So if council wouldn't mind, if we could do, direct it towards where the projects are, and then we'll highlight, so in the project area where you can see, for example, well, that's not working, but-
Well, you don't have to do it today, but I'm saying maybe down the line, we can add a spreadsheet to it to say how many numbers.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Oh, we could do that. Yes. Another thing I wanted to highlight before we get off the topic, and it was, it relates to something Mayor Protem Dunlap brought up, which is our roads. Our road funding, we oftentimes tried to pair the utility funding with the roadway funding. And we have so far been able to keep pace with the increased investment in water. This will be the first year that we won't potentially have the money to do the streets. And so we have highlighted on this, which are the water line projects currently in progress, that there are two. We're requesting CDBG funds for the West Ash area, I believe. And then Nutwood Yell, we're waiting to see if there's potential savings. So it may be a secondary phase based on what our other projects currently underway and road repairs actually net. But in the future, we won't be able to keep pace as we get to the 3, 5, 7, and 9 miles. So I did want to raise that to council's attention, that normally we try to do that, but it's no longer a possibility. And with that-
Ms. McQuaid, I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
First of all, thank you for all the work that you've done. I know your water is one of your main passions. And you've been, you've done a tremendous job. The question I have is on the PFAS treatment plants. If you can give a little update on that, it's a little bit more, we still have a little bit of a concern about the engineers that will operate these plants. So if you could highlight a little bit on that, touch on it a little bit.
Sure. So council was involved recently. We have had some issues with recruitment and potentially some retention. And that has occurred on the principal engineer level as well as on some of our operator levels and our distribution kind of lead worker levels. So as far as PFAS is concerned, right now, we, council recently revised the salary for the principal engineer. We went out for another recruitment. And unfortunately, it was a failed recruitment. We offered to two different people, top step, negotiated top step, and they basically turned down the position. So we're in, we're going through exactly the next approach for us related to that. Separately, the water treatment, so the production operators that are going to actually treat or perform the maintenance at the plant and perform the operation of the plant. Right now, we are struggling to also recruit and retain those. And we currently are at a treatment 2 level. With the addition of the future PFAS treatment systems, we will be at a T3 level. And we need to make sure that we have the adequate personnel to run those plants efficiently and effectively.
On the back end of that, a recent council meeting, there was some question as to whether we had the funding available to keep people to be able to conduct testing on the quality of our water. And I just wanted to make sure that we clarify that all the testing is done by the Orange County Water District currently.
In terms of the testing, yes, the only thing, for PFAS, absolutely. That's handled by Orange County Water District. The testing that we do is related to our main breaks and coordinating with the lab for that.
Thank you for that. And back to page number 10 on your presentation. I just was struck because I haven't seen this view of it before. The bottom picture there is-
The reservoir.
That's, yes. And from the inside, it would make quite a basketball arena, I think. But there was another comment in here about root intrusion.
Yes.
I know that in some areas, we certainly do see a fair amount of growth pretty close. Do we take extra steps to try to keep those areas as clear as possible of vegetation?
We do. And in fact, we've mobilized our landscape team a little bit differently in order to devote two full-time people that were being funded out of water directly to that, those efforts.
And then back to your chart with all the dots on it. Yes, I'm aware of the 80 to 120 breaks a year. And I recall, it was about eight years ago, I think, was the La Habra earthquake.
Oh.
And, you know, I got, I know the mayor of La Habra contacted me at the time and said that he was a little bit upset that it was called the La Habra earthquake because they only lost one water main and we had 13. We had 13 breaks just from that single event, major breaks. So I think this information is helpful. And I think it's particularly helpful as we show progress and start to erase or remove some of these problems. The linkage between street quality and our water system quality that one adversely affects the other significantly. So I think that as we're looking, as Mayor Protem talked about, looking to make progress by whatever means and by whatever funding we can apply to this problem, that after so many years of backsliding, it will be really encouraging to see us move forward on this. So I appreciate your efforts in that regard. I don't see any other hands raised here. Is-
I'll move to receive and file.
Second.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to recall whether we had public comment on this. We will make that request. Any member of the public who wishes to speak to this item, please make your intentions known as soon as possible.
Do we have any Zoom comments on this item?
We do not.
We always take an explanation to anyone watching. We always take a little extra time because we have a lag time to deal with on, on some of the broadcast here.
With no comments, are you ready for roll call votes?
Yes. And we did, we did have a motion and a second. So Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
With that, we have agenda item number 15. The subject is professional services agreement with Interleter Leider de Lamas and Associates, HDL, to outsource business registration services. And that will be reported upon by Ms. Chang.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor and City Council. For your consideration this evening is determination on whether the city should move to outsource business registration services and a corresponding professional services agreement with HDL to provide administration of new business registration applications, annual renewals, account closures, and sidewalk vendor permits. Available this evening to address any specific questions from City Council is Josh Davis with HDL, who is available remotely. So the contracting out of business registration services was costed over a five-year period. The city proposes elimination of two customer service representative, or CSR for short positions, which would be eliminated from the administrative services personnel summary budget to cover the cost of the professional services agreement with HDL. The cost of the implementation and the contract with HDL is compared to, is compared to the fully burdened cost of the two CSR positions, which were costed at top step of the salary range and offsets for HDL software and lyrical reporting costs, which the city would no longer incur. Over the five-year period, there is no cost savings by outsourcing business registration services. However, the additional cost is reduced over time by continued contracting, contracting out beyond the five-year period. The term of the professional services agreement with HDL is for an initial five-year term with three one-year options to renew. While there is, while there is additional projected cost to outsource business registration services, this cost is presented with the impacts as well as benefits of contracting out services. The primary impact of outsourcing business registration services is that there will no longer be in-service person delivery within city help. Businesses will register, renew, and close accounts online or over the phone. Another impact of outsourcing business registration is that city staff over time will lose business registration administration experience, making it challenging to return such services in-house. The cost and impacts are presented for consideration against the benefits of contracting out these services. HDL's business registration administration provides up-to-date knowledge of California tax laws, extensive experience in economies of scale with administering business registration services, online applications and renewal filing, as well as payment collection, as well as customer service hours from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in English, Spanish, Korean, and Chinese. HDL also provides revenue and discovery compliance services. They provide balanced discovery and enforcement to ensure compliance with city codes by identifying and educating unregistered businesses as to the city's business registration requirements. They also provide a business tax audit program to confirm registered businesses are compliant with local reporting requirements, as well as delinquency collection services. Because of the number of agencies HDL provides business administration services to, HDL is able to more expediently implement sidewalk vending certifications. So it's with that, it is recommended that city council authorize outsourcing business registration services for the administration of new business registration applications, annual renewals, account closures, and sidewalk vendor permits, and approve the professional services agreement between the city of Fullerton and HDL for business registration administration, discovery, and compliance services, and sidewalk vendor permit administration, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the agreement and the options to renew with HDL in a form approved by the city attorney. And with that, I will address any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chang. Any questions by council? Councilmember Jung, I see.
Director Chang, could you be kind enough as to let me know, guessimate ballpark figure, when these net savings turned into a positive for us to recruit year one? It's a five-year agreement, we don't have that in five years, but when would that be if we continued on?
It does kind of fluctuate, because the costing was based on the revenue and discovery services generating additional businesses being registered, so we alternated the year in which those would take place. So in some years, the cost would be a little higher, and some years, it would be lower, and over time, that would kind of net out. I would estimate that probably over that 10-year life cycle, should we outsource, it would be somewhat cost neutral over that period of time. But with the impacts of COVID and the reductions of businesses registering, it's, you know, the timing is difficult to kind of gauge.
And then I had one other. Why did staff recommend HDL? What was-
Yeah, the city currently uses HDL Prime to administer their software, to run the applications and the renewals. So there was cost savings, because if we decide to outsource the contract, we no longer need to pay the additional cost for the subscription service for the software. Additionally, HDL is probably the leader in providing this type of service. There are a number of agencies throughout the state of California that are currently providing business administration services too, and because of that, we felt that the staff are already familiar with the software, on the application process, they're familiar with the city's municipal codes, and for that reason, we decided to apply, to work with HDL through a sole source process.
So one question for you. Did we, how many competitive bids did we receive, and, you know, were the prices all sort of within this range?
So we went with the sole source process, sole source, so HDL provided a sole source letter, so we were able to not go out to competitive bid. I'm not currently aware of any other companies that provide this level of administration, discovery, and compliance services within the state of California.
So did we, you know, when they gave us those, that pricing, did we go back to them and ask if they could work with us because of a previous relationship, because of the existing relationship, you know, maybe the potential to waive some of the implementation costs? Be curious to know what, you know, the conversation was related to pricing.
Because the pricing is kind of based, it's $14 per application, it, the volume will vary depending on the number of renewals per year and the number of new businesses that are added. In terms of the cost for negotiating, we asked for their kind of best and final offer when they, when they did submit their proposal.
Do we know any neighboring or nearby cities that use the solution?
So currently, the cities of Brea, Cypress, Los Alamos, Fountain Valley, let me see, Chino Hills, Corona, Covina, West Covina, Upland, Walnut, and Signal Hill are all currently outsourcing their business registration administration services with HDL. There's also a number of other agencies throughout the state of California, but we asked them to provide the list of the local agencies that we're kind of familiar with the names with.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could put on a couple more on that. Usually when you outsource, you know, you do want to see those, the greater differential in savings and all that stuff, that's one reason to outsource. Another reason is to, you know, look at your operations. As we're looking at our operations going forward, if we took the additional revenue specialist, we would actually, that we're retaining, we would actually have greater savings from outsourcing. But in looking at our entire operations, and one of the things that we have to do is constantly look at how we're doing business and looking at our operations, we have to move that one position. So we do get better efficiency within the entire finance and administrative and revenue divisions, but we don't see the greater savings in this contract, but that's one reason why we're recommending it, is because we are moving things around as we're going forward, we're just not staying status quo as far as how we're operating. We're trying to better position all the pieces in order to get that better efficiency and better administration throughout the entire department and city.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. That was my perception as well, is that in having something as specialized as HDL, that we could receive a quality increase in, in some areas, as far as meeting deadlines and dealing and not really allowing things to fall between the cracks, as can happen so frequently, that I think that it's a certain amount of risk control in this entire category, and maybe, like you're saying, overall throughout the city. So with that, I don't see any more council questions at the moment. We should open this up for public comment.
I don't see any in-person comments. Oh, wait, do we have one coming? While we're waiting for Maureen to get to the microphone, do we have any Zoom comments?
She's zooming the other direction.
And do we have any Zoom comments on this item?
Yes, we, yes, we do. Can you hear me in the chamber?
Yes.
Yes, I can, sorry for the delay on that. Hi, this is Venesh Bharatwaja. I wanted to chime in on this. I'm not a big fan at all of outsourcing more of our public employees' jobs. More often than not, we get into contracts with outsourcing, and they don't end up really being a benefit in cost savings, but they definitely end up causing more issues for the taxpayer. Right now, we can go in and get permits in one location, and if we have to follow up with additional requests or additional, provide additional information, we have one central point to do that from. If we look at what the police department has done with outsourcing ticket processing, it's not a great experience for any of us. I mean, number one, getting a parking citation is no fun, but then when you're trying to get ahold of somebody at that outsourced provider, it's extremely difficult, there's very little accountability, and at the end of the day, we're taking more jobs away from people at a horrible time already in history to give it to an outsourcing company, where there's a lot less accountability. When we're told by people that, hey, there's these stipulations in effect for cost control, for increased productivity and whatnot, it's a lot easier to get that when your people are in-house. It's a lot harder to do that when you're dealing with a separate outsourced company, regardless of whoever it is or what level of service they've promised to provide. I'm just not seeing it. I'm not seeing that benefit when it comes to other organizations that have done the same. Again, I'll reiterate, I am not a fan of putting more people out of work and providing the opportunity for less accountability and less customer service. You've got people in-house, we can bring our concerns and complaints, if needed, to the city. When we've got complaints from an outsourced company, it's a lot harder to bring that back to people that can make a, that can actually make a change once those contracts are signed and hold these people accountable. With that, thank you for letting me speak on this topic tonight.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two more speakers. Ian Timmons.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Hello, Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Ian Timmons, and I'm the president of the Fullerton Municipal Employees Federation and a resident of the city of Fullerton. Our union represents frontline workers who provide essential services to residents of Fullerton. Outsourcing city work to an unaccountable corporate entity is, it's just not good for the city. Our union strongly opposes agenda item number 15. The post-contract is more expensive than the current in-house city services, as evidenced by the staff report. When the city hands over power to a corporate, or to a corporate entity, they are kind of at the will of that company, and any cost increases are just passed on to the taxpayer with no accountability. The city of Fullerton is slated to receive tens of millions of dollars as a result of federal aid. This legislation was fought for by unions and working families, so cities like Fullerton can expand their services. This is a bad move for, for city morale, city services, and our taxpayers, the residents of Fullerton. We say we vote no on outsourcing, not just because of that, but in our most previous outsourcing, things didn't work out in our favor. Mayor mentioned that things were slipping through the cracks, or things will not be slipping through the cracks. If we look back and we look at street sweeping, that has slipped through the cracks. I know firsthand how that has affected the public works department and the residents in general. Being a resident for 40 years, at least my family, that's a constant complaint, and now there is no accountability for those scoopers. So as part of the union, as part of a resident, the vote is no to outsourcing.
Zoom caller EDB, please unmute. Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, no more speakers.
Oh, yes, she made it.
Can you hear me? It takes a little bit. Anyway, I agree with the previous speaker that outsourcing is not the best idea at all times, because you have people that don't care, because they're not involved in the city, they're not tied to the city. I've worked contract and in-house, and there's a big difference. And have, in your research, did you talk to all these cities that you mentioned, and how are they doing? Did they like it? Are they, are they going, do they prefer it over in-house people? The people that count, because I'm a firm believer that outsourcing, if you start once, you're going to outsource the whole city, and we won't have a city after a short time. But I was wondering, have you talked to these people that have used this service? And are they really, really, really happy with it? I know it costs to have employees, but everything costs. I don't care what it is. And do you want people that care or people that want a paycheck? That's the difference. Thank you.
And with that, we will bring the discussion back to the council. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, one of the questions I had is that there's, there's no longer going to be any personal interaction, correct? So everything's going to be online. So what, what, what solution would there be for people to follow up or who want a personal, sometimes you want to talk to someone, you want to come to city hall to do your business, or sometimes there are small businesses that don't have necessarily that access or ability to go online. I know many of the small Latino businesses in South Walton may not have that ability to, to go online and deal with some outside companies. So what solutions do you have for them?
HDL does provide assistance with completing the business registration application over the phone as well, and as I mentioned earlier during the presentation, they do provide that level of phone service in multiple languages. Currently, right now, with COVID, because we were somewhat close to the public due to regulations, all the activity currently with business registration for a good period of time has been done remotely, but city staff have been kind of manning the phones. We are currently taking applications online as well, but all of that would be moved and managed by HDL. So with regard to the interface with fire or the planning department, because HDL's online services are probably more robust than what the currently, city currently provides, if staff, if a business is coming in and they need assistance with registering, they can pick up the phone, call HD, call the city's number, which would be directly relayed to HDL. They can walk them through what that application process is, also help them fill out the application directly on the phone. If the person does not have an email address, they would also be able to print that out and mail that to the individual, and then that individual can fill out the rest of the information and submit it back via mail. If someone is looking to register a business and they, they've kind of initiated that application process, and next they need to get a permit, they can go to the city to get or do the permitting remotely, and then reach back out to HDL to finalize that process. So I think it's, the phone service delivery is, will be somewhat seamless, and that's the kind of level of service the city is currently providing right now because of COVID.
Yes, Councilmember Jung.
Mr. Mayor, for the public and the stakeholders here on the phone, you know, I do want to give you some encouragement, that if you live here like Mr. Timmons does, there's certain level of proactiveness that you have that the city does well. The fact is, a lot of municipal employees don't live in the city that they reside in. Oftentimes, they don't make enough to live there, the cost of living's too high, and they live elsewhere. I don't find that outsourcing is always the most efficient thing to do, but it becomes efficient if there's no accountability for the public or for their elected representatives to be able to efficiently manage their work performance. And if that becomes the case, perhaps outsourcing is something that needs to be looked at, because the public needs to be served effectively and consistently, and perhaps that's not happening in this department, which is the reason why we're looking at this. That said, in the budget constraints that we have right now, I'm not even sure that we can, year one even, you know, if this were a cost savings, it would be way more appetizing for me, when you look at the state of our budget currently. appetizing for me when you look at the state of our budget currently. But the fact that it's not, it certainly leads me great pause. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, there was one other person on the line that didn't unmute fast enough. I don't know if you want to let that person speak.
Certainly, we want to allow that. While, while we're connecting up on that, I just had a quick question. You, you mentioned a processing charge for the service of $14?
I believe it is $14 per application.
So it's virtually, virtually a piecemeal charge, right? And so that's a very easy way to rate, you know, the, the cost and productivity and be able to comparison, create comparisons that way. So should this firm or any other firm not, you know, meet our expectations, it would be fairly easy to look elsewhere. Yes, our caller, who's on?
Please unmute, EDB. You can press star six to unmute if you're on your phone. Okay, Mr. Mayor, they had fixed their audio, but I think it's gone off again, so we can move on.
Okay, well, we can try. So we're back to any council final discussion on this. I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, if I may. Yeah, so, so looking at this, I, I, well, tonight, I'm not ready to, to move forward with this. I just think that all this going on and hearing from our employees association, I think our employees, given them a boost, letting them know we're behind them, will at this time serve the city better, so I will not be supporting this.
Well, if, again, I would entertain a motion on this.
I'll move the item.
Well, I will certainly second the item to try to move it along. We're making pretty good speed here this evening, so. So the item has been moved and seconded. Is there a further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jung.
No.
Councilmember Silva.
No.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Yes.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Yes.
And motion fails three to two.
And so with that, we will, we will move to item number 16, which is 1600 West Commonwealth Avenue, Affordable Housing Development Request for Proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Listen to, if you want to go ahead and pop this thing open. The item, request before you this evening is authorization to release a request for proposals for a city-owned property at 1600 West Commonwealth for affordable housing development. A quick recap on where we've been with this property. It was declared surplus by the city council back in June of 2020. We released a notice of availability, which is a mandated state requirement through HCD regarding the property in July. We interviewed a few of the original responders to our notice of availability in November, and then did a closed session review of those responders in December and February. There was some direction from the city council through those closed session discussions to perhaps make the process a little bit more transparent and to do, through a public hearing item, re-release this request for proposals. And so that's why we're here tonight. This is just the authorization to release the RFP. Ultimately, when proposals do come back in, they will be evaluated by city staff, and a recommendation will move forward again for city council consideration of what will likely be an exclusive negotiating agreement or some other contractual relationship as we work through the process for the development of affordable housing at this site. To familiarize everybody with the location, it's on the south side of Commonwealth Avenue, just west of the city yard, there, west of Basque. It's about 2.25 acres of developable area and a little over three acres of total land. The corner of Commonwealth and Basque is a CNG station, and the city will be retaining that as well as some additional existing storage buildings just south of the CNG station. The property is currently zoned manufacturing general, which means it will need to go through a zone change and a general plan amendment. There was a residential project proposed and approved here by the Olson Company back in 2006. Ultimately, that project was never constructed, and the city acquired the property back from the Olson Company around 2008, 2009. Some folks may remember that in 2018, there was some interest from a potential developer of the site for permanent supportive housing, and there was a request for an exclusive negotiating agreement at that point. Ultimately, there was a lot of concern from the Adelina Park neighborhood to the north of this site, and the exclusive negotiating agreement was never executed. The request for proposals is a pretty streamlined approach for receiving interest for affordable housing development. It's broken down into the following categories. There's a little bit of a description and background, which I, mostly of what I provided tonight. The project vision and goals for the site, which is the development of affordable housing, some recommended development standards. They are in accordance with our R3, our multi-family residential zoning classification, which is what we anticipate the new zoning for the property to be. And then there are seminal requirements and evaluation criteria, which speak to a number of things, including a pro forma, financial feasibility, site design, want to know a lot more about the, the team, the development team, and those kind of components. That evaluation criteria will be what city staff use to evaluate the proposals received, and then may, making a recommendation back to the city council, again, to enter into what will likely be an exclusive negotiating agreement to go further into the property disposition. Ultimately, there will be quite a bit of community outreach that will go in during that ENA period. So once the developer has been identified, one of the main things that they'll be doing in addition to working with the city on deal points for the sale or lease of the property is to conduct quite a bit of community outreach, primarily to the residential neighborhood to the north of the site, but also to adjacent property owners and stakeholders. Again, we want to make sure that the community has a chance to comment on the project, let the developer and the city know of any concerns as we work through that property sale. So the next steps, if the city council authorizes the release of the RFP this evening, we'll be placing it on our city website through our bids portal so that it's available for interested parties. We will be sending it specifically to the top six proposals that were responsive to the notice of availability, and we do hope that each of those firms will consider submitting a response to this RFP as well. If it is released tonight, or approved or released tonight, we have a due date of April 12th. We do want to keep this project moving. We know it is definitely an important one for our affordable housing development here in the city. We will review at a staff level the responses based on the evaluation criteria, and then be bringing a top list of scoring teams that will be coming forward to the city council for an exclusive negotiating agreement to, again, start that negotiation process, and again, do a lot of community outreach about the project. So just by selecting the top developer doesn't mean that we've necessarily landed on the project, it's just who we're going to be getting into that negotiating process with. And with that, action, recommended action is authorize the release of the RFP, and I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions at this point?
Actually, I think Councilmember Silva, where are you?
Oh, I was just going to say, I'll move the item, I don't have any questions.
Thanks, a couple comments. I think what, what's important for me here, and I think what's important for us as a city and certainly as a council going forward, is that, you know, really consistency and transparency are two of the cornerstones of good governance. And I, I think what's important to note is that while we had had, you know, different, I guess you could call them proposals submitted, it was not a true RFP in the sense that there was no RFP issued to solicit a, a formal proposal from, you know, some of these, you know, parties who were interested. And so, you know, really, they provided information about a potential project, you know, as a highly, I think, just as a result of that subjective process in which there were kind of apples-to-oranges comparisons, and that left a lot of the applicants frustrated over some of the inconsistencies in that, in that process. And so I, I think it's really important for us to take this into account and to take this into consideration as we look not just at this 1600 Commonwealth site, but also at some of the other surplus land properties that we're going to be dealing with, because these are, we, you know, we know that this is, we know that we benefit from community input and community engagement, and I think by having an open and transparent process where people can contribute, not just to, you know, the, I guess, the finality of a project, but feedback into shaping or, or weighing in on what might be going into their neighborhood, I think is, it, it can be helpful. You know, it doesn't always have to be, or have a negative connotation in that sense. And so, you know, I think it's really important for us to, and I know we've kind of, you know, at least for the past three months, you know, kind of pushed on this to make sure that we got the process right. And I think now that we actually do have a formal RFP required, you know, requirement, you know, not just on the 1600 site, but on the other surplus sites, we'll be considering, you know, I think that's a big step in the right direction. So thank you, thank you for that, and I, I would actually make a second.
Seeing no other comments by council, I would request a public comment on this item.
And while we're waiting again for Maureen to work her way around, do we have any Zoom comments?
We didn't have the screen flipped.
No Zoom comments at this time.
Thanks.
My question is, in this RF, RFP, did I say it right? Are you going to require suitable or safe living space for the mobily challenged? There's very little, in fact, almost no, nowhere, anywhere, I don't care in the recognized world, they have denied space for the mobily challenged. And I'm just wondering, are you going to require that these RFPs have space for the mobily challenged? So much has been wasted. I see so much space wasted that could be a living space for the mobily challenged that is safe and also not necessarily secure, yes, it should be secure, but when I say safe, when there's an emergency, you don't want to, you don't want to be as good as dead if something happens. If you can't get out, there is no possibility. I'm not saying that everything should be that way, but the most common thing is that you don't include it, and it's so easy to include. Space has been left empty for months and months and sometimes years that could have been used for the mobily challenged. And I'm not going to say what it is because nobody's been able to answer it. I want you to think about it for a little while and see if you, if you know what I'm talking about. It may be wrong, but it's something that has to be thought about, and I have yet to know anybody that has been able to answer the question about safe living space for the mobily challenged. Thank you so much, and I hope you include that in your RFP. Thank you.
We're good. Okay, we'll bring the item back to the council. I would entertain a motion on this.
We, we, we had a motion already?
Oh, that's right, there was a motion, I'm sorry.
I just have a question for Mr. Folks.
Sure.
Can you answer that question that Maureen posed to us?
Yes, so the, the California Building Code has a wide range of requirements for making sure that there are units provided for ADA accessible, so handicap accessible units. And so we don't need to worry so much that we have to watch out for that because that's mandated by the state of California.
So as part of the ADA?
It will absolutely be required.
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. We'll call the question on this item.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Item number 17, the subject update on Fullerton Museum reopening plan. This would be an item that was requested by Mayor Protem Dunlap and Councilmember Jung at March 2nd, the city council meeting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, there's the staff report in front of you, and communicating with the Museum Center Association, they are not ready with an April 15th opening at this time. There's several things that are kind of spelled out in the staff report, also in the attached email from Janet Buzon, who is the vice president of the FMCA. And so what, also what we're doing right now is kind of what we'll be talking about at the end of the meeting with the American Rescue Plan Act. There is some funding there that we are pursuing because there is some grant opportunities due next week, and we are working with Towns and Public Affairs and the Museum Center Association to look at how we can best utilize that for reopening. Alice Loyah, who is currently one of the managers in the Parks and Rec Department, is working with the Fullerton Museum Center Association also, so that we can identify what staffing is needed from the city to assist, get them open, and then also how we assist them otherwise. So open for any questions right now, but again, per the, the association, they're not ready for that April 15th meeting. I think that was proposed by a, a non-member of their association, but they do have a lot of things set forward, and they are looking to reopen, and we do most certainly want to help them get that, especially with that first exhibit, which is going to be dedicated to Tommy Lasorda.
Can we agendize this item to, I guess, be on every council, council meeting then as we approach that so that we can work towards, you know, whether that's, you know, whatever June 1st opening, if that's what we think it might be now?
You know, it, it would, you know, if I put it on for April 6th and they're still not looking until the June, you know, I would leave it to the museum association, and what I would do is, based on discussions and working with them, if there is an accompanying city staff need, so if we have to do some non-regular staffing, then of course we'll have to bring that back. So at that time, we can bring it back, give an update, and move forward together with the association and the city returning the, the services.
So can we effectively say, I mean, at this point, what else is there on the city's, you know, on the city's plate that we could take care of so that it is in fact ready and truly, you know, dependent on the museum association settling things up on their end? And is there anything lingering on the city's?
Um, you know, right now, what we're doing is we're, once we understand better the American Rescue Plan Act and the revenue loss and how we look at things, as we get into the orange, and then hopefully, you know, probably by summer, the yellow tier of the pandemic, we will know, you know, what services we are bringing back, how much we can trigger the Thursday night markets and what goes on with that. They're looking at how best to do the Beer Garden, which is one of their major fundraisers. I'm recommending that the city council assist on a couple of things. One, you know, because of the pandemic, they lost some funding, or not funding, but some, they had to spend revenue for non-refundable deposits. That's a revenue loss, so I want to look at, you know, being able to assist them on that. Also, you know, back in, when we did the original, I think it was 2004, then an update in 2010 after the Great Recession, where the city was collecting 25% of both the membership fees, the admission fees, and then 25% of the retail store fees. I don't think we need to do that. I think that's something the association should keep 100%, that encourages them to, you know, reach out, do membership drives and all that stuff. And when it came down to it, it was about $35,000 to $44,000. And when it came down to it, it was about $35,000 to $44,000. So, at that point, it's, it's not worth it overall. So, you know, we will be looking at how we reconstruct the agreement with them to make sure everything's good. I still believe that there's a community partnership out there that would keep the museum association in doing what they're doing. But clearly, you know, to bolster our ability and to have a better financial partner, which is clearly not the city, it would be great to work with another group such as Cal State Fullerton, so. So, I'd ask then, if, you know, if we know that we're going to be addressing some of these, you know, the funding resources, specifically stimulus, you know, by the end of the month, but we think, you know, early April would be too soon, then why don't we agendize the mid-April meeting so that we can kind of have a review as to, you know, those items? And then that gives us about a month and a half before, you know, what we would potentially work towards as an opening. Yeah, and that would be an update at that point. And if there's any action items, absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the board, museum board meeting last night, in fact, and the, the issue is definitely, there's, there's a lot that goes on to actually put together and, and event, to curate an event. And there's only two scheduled for this year, the Tommy Lasorda one that is still in the works as well. And then there's also the Native American art that is probably towards the end of the year. COVID has sort of put a wrench in the wheels of scheduling all of these curated programs. So, they definitely, the museum board definitely feels, just like, you know, the city manager said, that they need some time to put, put it all together, to reorganize internally as well. There's still some inventory that they need to take. They did really speak highly of Alice Loyah, and I want to thank her for working with, with the museum board and being very proactive about it and helpful. And so, there, there is still a lot. I'd like to give the museum board some flexibility in, allowing them some breathing room, some time to be able to, to actually put together something that is valuable and curates some of these programs. I think that a June update would be, would be fine. But I think the main, the main issues is going to be really support staff. Staffing is going to be the, the thing that they're going to need the most, especially as the, we move forward with, you know, putting together these programs. I think that's where, so maybe we can look into some of the, bringing back some part timers maybe, or some of the staff that were, we lost during the COVID. So, that I think would be helpful, some staffing. So, maybe we can look into that. And then, so, so there are, you know, short-term issues to, to get it back and running the way it should run and it used to. But there's also long-term, and that's something that we need to start talking with the association, with the museum board association, and then coming up with some of these plans and agreement and looking at sustainability. So, I think we're all on the same page. Communication is very well, and they've been satisfied with the way it's communicated. There was one email, I think there's some confusion on the issue of Cal State, and I think there's an email from, from city manager to Cal State. Maybe you can elaborate a little bit on that. Explain a little bit the, what, what your vision is on how Cal State would be involved in this.
Well, what we are doing is looking for community partnerships, much like what we're doing with the RFP process for community centers right now. And knowing that Cal State Fullerton had stepped into a similar situation in Santa Ana with the Grand Center Arts Station down there, which was, had an association and the city involvement, and Cal State Fullerton was able to step in and help both entities, and that center is going strong. So, understanding that the city is a, not the best financial partner, was exploring a lot of different opportunities for who out there could be that partnership. And knowing that Cal State Fullerton is strong in the area, they had been looking in the downtown area for retail space. And the retail store at the museum is, I don't know what their sales are, but I don't think they're strong based on the amount of revenue that we were getting. So, if there's an opportunity to have some of those partnerships where more people are coming in, you know, they have a great Cal State Fullerton alumni network, they have great cultural arts and other programming going through the campus and through their majors and getting more people in there, you know, that's a stream of people coming into the Fullerton Museum, being coming, hopefully, members of the Fullerton Museum Association. So, that was the goal there, to reach out, see if they're willing, willing to even consider that. And then, once you have that information, of course, bringing it back to the city council, to the association, saying, here, here's an opportunity, here's an option.
Well, in this, the only concern is that, I think, in pursuing third-party or other partners in the city, and it's a great idea, I think it's, it's important to seek these partnerships. But I think the, having these discussions with the, the association would be, would be very important, having them be part of that discussion, you know, on the, from the beginning.
Totally understand, and that's why some changes have been made.
Yeah. So, thank you.
The only, the only comment that I would add to it is that it still seems to me that time is of the essence a little bit, that the longer any of these, these remain dormant, the less opportunity that we have to seek getting back to a more normal status and make use of these assets rather than, than delaying or pushing it off. I tend to agree, I think, with Mayor Protem, who is looking at a shorter horizon on this. And I think by setting a shorter horizon, we actually help to force people to move in the direction of finding these solutions. Otherwise, my concern is that if we don't find the right rescue partner on this, that these will remain mothballed for some period of time. So, I do share that urgency as it comes to this, to this matter. And I do understand the pressure it puts on our staffing requirements. But perhaps the solution lies therein. Perhaps we can actually obtain a lower level of staffing support by modifying some of those activities. And, and if that would equate to being a partial reopening, I think that still would be preferable to, to having no activities.
And, Mr. Mayor, and I would agree that we need to move on this. But I think we also need to respect the president of the Fullerton Museum's request that we slow down and let them kind of take the lead. Because I think we, we, when we put this in motion, which is a great idea, I think we were being asked or pushed a bit by someone who was not a member of the museum board. So, I think, I agree that we, now that we have Ms. Loyah on that board, there'll be better communication, and we can work with them to make sure this is open as soon as possible. Yeah.
Well, right, the better communication should actually accelerate the process, in my opinion.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to answer your question, the issue is, and they do requests, and I do support the idea of giving more staffing or as much as we can. The issue is that even if we open, there's nothing to show. Like, that's, that's the thing. They need, they need time to actually curate these programs and to put together back the, the exhibits and so on. So, you can open it, but there's, what are people going to come and buy tickets for?
Well, the Finner Museum in the back, right? I mean, they can access that.
But that's all been displaced, you see. And that's why they're going through inventory, and they're going through all this process to kind of reinstate all of this. So, it does take time.
Sure.
It could accelerate this with, with some maybe additional staffing. We can accelerate this. But still, you need, you need to have something to show when we're opening the doors and what is there. It's just an empty building.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think that's why April 16th, so two meetings from now, bring it back. There's no deadline on that. I do believe that, yes, we ought to follow the leadership of the Museum Center Association to make sure that they are ready for everything during this time. We will hopefully be getting a lot more information about our finances. We are developing our budget going forward. We won't have all the information, but we'll have more, and we'll be, you know, one more puzzle piece at that time. At that time, it may be, okay, it's April, let's go into May. But it's perfectly, you know, good to put this, to continue this to April 16th.
April 13th, perhaps?
April.
Six, it's 20th.
Or, I'm sorry, 19th. Sorry, oh yeah, 4/20. April 20th.
Okay, got it.
And Mayor, I will note, I believe we have a, at least one public comment on this item.
Okay. With that, we will seek other public comment. We'll listen to this one.
And let's start with Zoom comments.
Okay. Caller with the last digits, oh, they just got off the call. Next caller will be Matthew Leslie.
Hi, good evening, council. I just had a general question in mind here. Obviously, the cut to, of all funding to the Fullerton Museum Center has come during a time of financial difficulty for the city compounded by the pandemic. So, I'm wondering, even when the pandemic ends and the city gets on better financial footing, does the city intend to begin funding the museum center again as a facility of Parks and Rec? Or is it the stated intention of the council to spin it off to some other entity, no matter the financial condition of the city?
And with that, Mr. Mayor, no more speakers?
Okay, we'll, we'll bring back to the council for discussion. I don't know if, if anyone has something to add at this stage. Seeing nothing, I would, I would entertain a motion.
So, moved?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Can we get clarity again on that motion?
To continue the item to April 20th.
Yeah.
Just to make sure we've got the right date. Okay, April 20th. And, okay, so, move and a second. With that, we'll call the question. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Onto item number 18, which the subject is outdoor dining and retail regulations, extension and amendments to provide for health and safety, submitted by our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to pull Matt. It's going fabulous. It's wonderful. Everybody loves outdoor dining. Outdoor dining is the new thing that we're going to do. So, what we would like to do is extend it to September 30th at this time, because again, not knowing where the state is, what's going to happen, if there's going to be a, you know, a variant or anything like that. But we just want to be prepared and help our restaurants, especially if we truly are getting out of this and are on the tell end. There's a lot of room to make up, and the outdoor dining space provides that to a lot of the different restaurants that really didn't have the indoor dining space. And there are still a lot of people who enjoy outdoor dining more than indoor dining. So, the other thing that we wanted to kind of get some consideration on as we go forward in the budget year and looking at projects is a lot of enthusiasm for potentially making some outdoor dining opportunities permanent. So, we want to get that direction so city staff can start looking at it, talking to business owners and property owners and seeing what we can do specifically on our property issues. So, that is my report. But it is fabulous and going great. And I encourage everybody, and once we're in the orange, we're going to have, I think, 50% occupancy in the restaurants. Right now, we're indoor with 25%. I ate lunch the other day at El Matador, and I was inside, and it was a good experience and good food. You know, I would just say, I think this is a no-brainer for us. I think you proposed through September. I'd actually be supportive of it through the end of the year. But, you know, and not to mention, I mean, there was the award-winning aspect where I think, you know, it's just, you know, it's some, it's a great experience. I think people really enjoy it. So, you know, perhaps this is one of the things that, you know, will stay around after, you know, this is all over. So, I'm supportive of it.
I'm a big supporter of alfresco dining, particularly to take advantage of the wonderful climate that we have here in Southern California. And I might suggest a slight modification. I was talking with someone recently who said we'd like to see it through September 31st. And if we went with September 31st, that might be about the right length of time, I think, on this.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest or ask that we look at Wilshire and see if we can open a bike path. I know that was the street that we had designated as a bike path. So, maybe figure out a way to put one in there. I know as the months warm up, there may be cyclists who are out there and want to take Wilshire all the way down. So, that would be just one to look to see what we can do. And maybe even there on Wilshire, as the months heat up, maybe put some sort of carpet or something on the asphalt so it doesn't heat up to 120 degrees. Maybe look at that. I know that down on Laguna Beach, they're, they put, I think, somewhat like a mini deck or pallets on the street so you don't get that heat. And Placentia has put, I think, carpet or green something on the, on the asphalt. So, those will be two suggestions, just to look at and see what we can do with that.
Yeah, I think, you know, we were the first year in Orange County, but certainly a lot of other folks have come up with some innovative ideas, and we will explore and look at all those. And, you know, talk to other users, the bicyclists, and, you know, the property owners and everybody. So, absolutely, we'll look at all that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Yeah, certainly, I'm very supportive. And I think there was, this is probably one of the silver linings of, of this whole pandemic experience, that we've discovered new things and new ways to, to communicate and to do business. And so, I'm supportive, and I'd love to see us look at some of these on a permanent basis as well, looking at some of our downtown area or other streets that could become more walkable experiences. And definitely, it kind of reminds me of Europe a little bit. You know, you see European cities where you see just pedestrians, people walking by, and then some bikes going by. I think there's, there's a way that we can accommodate both and make this into a more lively downtown, especially during the summer. I think we're going to have a good summer season. Thank you.
It's time. I recall a decade ago, this was a hot topic. We were talking about expanding alfresco dining downtown. So, perhaps the time has come at this stage. Now, did I request public comment on this item? At this stage, any member of the public wishing to comment on item number 18?
And do we have any Zoom comments?
Yes, we do. Caller with the last four digits. Nevermind, seems they keep raising and lowering their hand. Matt Leslie.
Hi, good evening again, council and directors of various parts of government there. Thank you very much for the attention to the Bike Boulevard. It was one concern I had early on in the adoption of this, this outdoor dining area on West Wilshire. As many people know, this was a $3.2 million project, the Bicycle Boulevard in Fullerton. It's part of the city's Bicycle Master Plan. The money did come mostly from the federal government through the, through OCTA. And actually, by blocking it off, I'm, I'm concerned that we may be in violation, you know, of the terms of that grant to, I thank Mr. Silva for bringing up the idea of keeping bicycle traffic through there. I think that we need to do that. I'm glad that the signs outright banning them came down. But there has to be something done there to make it amenable to both purposes, or else only the bicycles should be through there. It's just not tenable to have it kind of in the middle there and be ambiguous. And to that end, I'd like to request that you put it before the Act of Transportation Committee, which is in fact, the, the successor to the, to the Bicycle Users Subcommittee that spent years working on this, and incidentally, ably handled by Mr. Folks while he was staffing that committee. And, you know, he's now the director of planning, so I'm sure he'll be paying close attention to that. I would also have another request, since you did bring up the fact that you'd be revisiting these, you know, these rules for outdoor dining in other areas of the city. When this came before the council before, I'd requested that you ban smoking, particularly in, on city-owned areas. Almost any other city bans smoking, the city of Los Angeles does. I mean, it's, it's a nonstarter in most other places that you would allow outdoor dining, you know, with smoking there. It's just, it's, it's not, get with it, you know. It's, so, please, please pay attention to those two points in, in going forward with these plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was wondering if by chance, the streets that are, if they could have a little dip in them like a bus dip, so Ubers and taxis can drop off and pick people up. so Ubers and taxis can drop off and pick people up, like off of Harbor Boulevard, instead of going all the way around the block.
Is that possible? And it would be a lot easier, so, since the dining area is outside anyway, and have a little walkway so we could get through. And I would like to see that very much because sometimes it's quite difficult trying to explain to access or same-day taxi where, where I want to be picked up. So if, if you could think of something like that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks for the suggestion. It's good to hear people thinking multimodally on this, on this area.
And do we have any more Zoom comments?
We do not.
Okay, so with that, we'll bring the item back to council.
I'll move the item.
Moved by Councilmember Silva, seconded by Mayor Protem Dunlap. If there's nothing more, we'll call the question. Oh, wait, Councilmember Jung was there?
I, I do like the caller's request of bringing it before the Act of Transportation Use Committee. If we can do that, Mr. Folks, Director Folks, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, we'll call the question on this. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap. And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Item number 19, subject is Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly Delegates, submitted by our city manager.
Would you like me to do this? Thank you. I could do it in about 30 seconds. The Southern California Association of Governments, if I can remember what the SCAG stands for, is having their general conference this May, May 6th. And they are asking city council to appoint a delegate and an alternate delegate. And I'm sorry, you won't go to the desert this year to enjoy the weather in May. It's going to be a Zoom conference this year.
Yeah, and then I know, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I know Councilmember Jung and myself requested to do this. And, and I would ask to be the delegate only because when the new president came in to SCAG, Mr. Rex Richardson from Long Beach, he passed Resolution Number 20-6232, which was, it was, that's his affirming its commitment to advocate justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion throughout Southern California. So he formed a special committee on equity and social justice. And they've been going through the, this process where they're gonna come up with a racial equity early action plan. And I was, I was, President Richardson gave me an appointment to one of the committees, so I've been following this along. And I would just like to be the delegate so that in May, when they present this equity early action plan, if you will, that I could see it through his conclusion. So that's the reason I would ask, that I would be appointed as a delegate, just to see this process through and then see what SCAG comes up with.
Okay, and Councilmember Jung, do you have?
I'd ask that this be replaced, placed on the agenda only because of the fact that I know that our Madam City Clerk was emailing back and forth. And I thought this would be much more efficient in terms of transparency to discuss it on the dais tonight. But I do understand and admire Councilman Silva's request, and I'm happy to honor that.
And Madam Clerk, any other interested parties on the council can nominate themselves as well, right?
Correct.
So if there is any more interest, if not, we will close the nominations and pretty much it would be a vote by acclamation at this stage. Seeing no others, we do have the recommendation that Councilmember Silva be the delegate and Councilmember Jung be the alternate. And with that, we'll call the vote.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We'll move.
Second.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap. And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The last item on the agenda, item number 20, the American Rescue Plan Act update. The recommendation is to provide direction as appropriate. This item, Councilmember Jung, would you care to lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wanted to have the discussion on council, on the dais this evening with regards to how we would direct staff and our city manager to, with regards to these funds. It's a lot of money, and I thought that once the news came out in public, we would have commentary like Mr. Timmons made this evening about how this belong, that money belongs to unions. And I would, as much as I enjoy Mr. Timmons, I'd, I'd argue that this money belongs to the taxpayers of Fullerton and the residents they're in, not necessarily just the unions or any party thereof. So I wanted to make sure we had this discussion today, this evening, so we can give direction accordingly. So I'm, I'm grateful for our city manager, that he put this on, and I look forward to the discussion.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so what, I would, kind of in echoing what Mr. Mayor Protem said, I would like to see if we can look at, because on here it says there's, right now, they, it says that we don't, we're not allowed to fix streets, I think, somewhere on there. But I, I would like to see if we can look at some of these funds because it does talk about water and sewer and see if we can expedite all the water main breaks that we've had in some of the neighborhoods and maybe use some of this funding to speed that up, to do another, I don't know, quarter mile, a half mile more a year or mile. So I'd like to see that be an emphasis, a focus or, or a priority for looking at the, the other funds.
Yeah, you know, and I'd also like to see us get as creative as possible and using that, you know, to make some of those road and street improvements as well. So, you know, to the extent you have ideas or our consultants have ideas, you know, or potentially, if you think it's, it's beneficial to have a conversation with our representative to see if potentially, you know, we could get an adjustment made so that we can. You know, I really think it's incumbent upon us to push, given this great resource available to our community, to use as much of this money as possible, you know, to fund these repairs.
Certainly concur that it is a good idea to discuss how these are to be utilized generally and to provide that direction to staff. So for that reason, I, I would prioritize, as has been mentioned here, tangible items, which these would be one-time monies. And they need to be used judiciously in that regard, not to create future costs in the process. So I'm glad that this was brought up. And I, if there's anything further, because this is a provide direction item.
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager. Do we have any idea when more details on how we can spend this money will come? Because I know there's not much details yet.
Correct. There is not a lot of details right now. Staff from Administrative Services participated in a National League of Cities webinar today. It really just kind of reiterated what was in the package and where we're at now. What we did learn is that, you know, as previously stated, it would be 60 days from signing. It now seems that it's 60 days from certification or certifying, but no one yet knows what that means. So what I believe is that we would maybe, like we did with the CARES Act where we brought before the council and it was a plan of action for all the different funding sources, that we would probably have to propose something like that. So yes, we would be bringing back to this council for at least the $34 million that would be coming to Fullerton over two years, 17.3, within 60 days or so of that certification, some form of plan. But right now, there's been no other guidance from the Department of Treasury. And so we don't know exactly what they mean by you can use it for sewer water and broadband infrastructure. And so, you know, trying to ferret out that information is still gonna be probably anywhere from two to four to five weeks down the road. But what we want to make sure is that if there is some more information, then at the next meeting, we'll have a certified plan or a resolution or something. But we don't even know what they mean by that yet. So a absence of a lot of information right now.
Yeah, no, I, I'd hate to count our, our, our eggs.
Yeah, there is a lot of stuff that we'll be looking at because one of the items from today's webinar, and staff did a great job of putting together a matrix, is, you know, so there is $10 billion in the Fund for Capital Projects. The National League of Cities is making, is pushing to have some of this available for locality. So Mayor Protem, that's where I think your idea of reaching out to Congresswoman Kim and saying, hey, of this $10 billion, make sure it just doesn't get all to states, but that it does come down to local cities. The other thing is that, you know, there's $5 billion for tenant-based rental assistance, $28.6 billion for restaurant revitalization fund, $21.5 billion for emergency rental assistance, and $9.9 billion for homeowner assistance fund. So there's a lot of funds that we want to understand better so that we can help out our businesses, our property owners who have not been getting rent on some of their properties, and the renters and the tenants who have all been suffering. So there's just not enough information right now, but we know those big pots are out there. And then we also expect that there's gonna be smaller parts. Like, we do know there's about a $1.9 million direct allocation to the city for homelessness. So we're trying to find out more information about how that can be used. And we expect that there will be a lot of other little tiny things like that, kind of like what I mentioned earlier on the museum, is that we're gonna be putting in for funding sources for a grant next week. When I was on a call with Congresswoman Kim last week, she had mentioned that from the original CARES Act, there's still a little over a trillion, with a T, dollars of funding that has not been spent from the first go-round. And so they're looking at making sure that we can push that out and push it out appropriately, so.
Yes, Councilmember Jung.
What I would like, you know, again, this was just for, to provide our city manager and the staff direction in terms of where council would like to see a lot of this money go. And I concur with our Mayor Protem, our mayor and our esteemed councilman to my left, that we should find every avenue to make sure this money goes towards infrastructure. I think that's what the voters would demand in our case, and I'd certainly concur with that. Please don't spend your time, city manager, counting the chickens. Let's try to find a solution for the infrastructure.
So I will request public comment on this item.
And I believe we failed to get public comment on the prior item, too. I pushed you right through to the vote. I apologize for that. So maybe we could cover both if we have anybody who's interested in either the SCAG appointment or this item. I don't see anyone in chambers jumping up. Do we have any Zoom comments?
We do. Caller 1911. Caller 1911, you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you. Okay, moving on to the next caller, Matt Leslie.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. Just quickly, here's a thought. Perhaps we can help fund the museum center with some of that money, if that's possible. And with regard to the prior agenda item, I wonder if we can ask the, the delegates to the SCAG conference to present a report to the council or to the public just to kind of give us an idea of what goes on there? Thank you.
Okay, one last try for caller 1911. Okay, hearing none. There are no more comments.
Okay, we'll bring the item back to council. This would be a receive and file item.
So I, I would move the item, and I would also just, two things I forgot to mention. I think we also have some agreements with some labor unions that we said we would, they would take a cut or a reduction if we got funding at the end. So that's gotta be looked at. And, is that correct?
Yeah, so as part of entering the pandemic crisis and the financial, the executive group took a 5% pay cut starting in May. And then in July, that became a 10%. And then around September, the Fullerton Management Association and the Confidential Unit both agreed to 5% pay cuts in order to participate. As part of that action, it was stated that if there was relief of that covered revenue loss, that we would cease that reduction because in a way, it was kind of like helping us get through the year that we didn't know what the year was gonna be like. And then based on that recovery or the, the funding, bring back to council for the potential of repaying them that money that they provided. I am looking to bring on the April 6th meeting an item for that.
And then one, one other thing, I think that would be important, well, it might be important to more than me, restore our, restore our reserve fund. I know we had to tap into that, and, and I'd like to see if we can get it up to what we would all like to see, maybe around 17%. So I'd, I'd like to look at that, see if that would be possible. That helped us this year when we were able to tap into it. And I think we need to replenish that so we have that if something else happens. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move the item.
I'm awaiting a second here, but.
I'll second.
I, I do want to comment a little bit on what you said, Mr. Silva, because one of the great concerns, one of the reasons for these extraordinary appropriations of taxpayer money back to the American public is to help restore those who were damaged, those who especially were damaged severely during the pandemic and the lockdown of our economy. And far and away, the largest number of victims was in the for-profit sector, for the private sector. So many others who have really not all been on the same page and, and had huge numbers of layoffs or salary cuts or lost business revenues. They're the ones who were seeking to make, probably not make whole, but at least help to fill in those, those very large gaps that developed. So while I'm certainly supportive of being fair with, with all of our labor groups and being fair with, with all those public servants who have served admirably throughout the pandemic, I think one of the lead criteria in this, in this matter should be to try to apply those, those tourniquets to areas which, which were very severely affected. We've had numbers and numbers of people throughout this pandemic who have not had to worry about their salary turning up, being laid off. And to have a large amount of these funds go in that direction, I think, would be inappropriate.
And I would agree. I'd double down on that with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And so, I mean, it would be only very surplus funds, I think, that should be utilized in that fashion. And with that, I guess we do have a motion.
And just to clarify, this is a receive and file, correct? Okay.
In a second, so if you're ready for the vote. Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap. Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Just a moment. We're at the end of our agenda for this evening and just a brief moment of silence once again in the memory of a six-year-old Daniel Harlan Bussel. Thank you for that. Childhood diseases are just a terrible thing. And. With that, we are adjourned for this evening. And our next regular meeting, that's what I was looking for here, is April, April 6th, yes. I wanted to make sure and get the date right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.